Evening, Planning Board is now in session. First item on the agenda is 154-156 Northborough Road, major site plan approval, public hearing, continued public hearing, and the continued public hearing for 154-156 Northborough Road, special permit for lower impact development. I'll ask the town planner to update us since our last meeting on this public hearing. Karina?
Okay, the planning board met for the first time on June 4th for major site plan approval and special permit for low impact development. And at that meeting, you were continued to July 23rd, at which time, one board member wasn't able to attend, and you requested that you would like to have five members sit to here. So there was an agreement to continue to this evening. In the meantime, let me just get this straight. So after the first planning board meeting, a second submission was made on June 20th. Fussin O'Neil, Towns Engineering Consultant, reviewed the plans and provided review comments, to which the applicant and their engineer, Stamsky and McNary, provided a revised set of plans, which they submitted this past Wednesday, July 25th. Those plans were distributed to the planning board members, Fussin O'Neil, to review once again, and to the town departments, if there were any additional comments. On Friday, the 27th, we received response comments to the traffic impact assessment that had been previously submitted to Fussin O'Neil, who provided comments, and MDM, the consultant who prepared the traffic impact, provided a response to that, which was also forwarded to Fussin O'Neil for further review, and is pending. Discussions with Fussin O'Neil today, I anticipate to get review comments on the third submission of the site plans and stormwater report, as well as the traffic impact response by the end of next week, is the tentative date. Let's see, in the interim, we also received a variety of feedback from various other departments, committees, and just briefly run through them. I had received some information from town council, to which Mr. Aho responded with a secure address that I had emailed you, and you answered that. The Open Space Preservation Commission provided review comments as well. They have a small PowerPoint presentation, or PowerPoint, some pictures that they wanted to discuss this evening. The fire department provided us with some comments, concerns of the type of tenants, the uses, specifically like welding uses, and previously had given us some standard comments. There was a, an email from the fire department discussing the potential for a memorial that had been previously discussed, I think in the 2008 to 10 timeframe with the last permit process that went through. There was a rapport between the builder and the family of the two girls who had had the horrible accident, and there was some discussion back then, and he was, the fire department, was asking if there was any rediscussion of that. The DPW commented regarding the trees in the right of way, and indicated that to that department it wasn't significant, and that they would be satisfied with the planning board's landscaping requirements, and that they would be the best, the project would be best served by the planning board's decision on the landscaping there. Building Department had commented on the clarification of uses, concerned with some remote oversight of the management of the facility in that regard. The Board of Health provided us with a letter that they had sent to the applicant and possibly the engineer regarding some initial information needed on the various uses, so that they could confirm that the calculations were done properly. And there were some other comments they had, you know, what kind of solid waste is allowed in the dumpsters or on-site. Then we had, in a butter, email us through the town system, and they had reviewed the plans. It was a resident on Jericho Hill Road who indicated that the residents on Jericho Hill Road have private wells, and one of the statements in the prior response from the engineer was that there were no private or public wells within one mile. So I forwarded that to your engineer, and they responded that they were going to address that comment. So that brings us to tonight, and I just wanted to give you a rundown on those comments, so you know.
Hold on, please. Thank you. If you want to speak, you can come to the mic.
Sure. I just wanted to clarify, the first comment you'd made, was that just when you had asked me for my address?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
You're on, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Bobrowski for the applicant. My office is in Concord. We're going to take our presentation in small bites, and the first to present will be Bill Hall to my left, who'll talk about the civil, which I think we can hopefully put to bed tonight, having had a number of exchanges with Fussin O'Neil.
Good evening, William Hall with Stamsky and McNary. So I'll just present the plan that we have proposed here. To start with the budding wells, I believe what they are referencing is perhaps in our response letter, we say that the nearest public water supply well is located in Northborough, approximately 3,100 feet from the project site. There are no known private water supply wells located in the vicinity of the project site, so that was our statement. We have now been made aware that there are wells on Jericho Hill Road, so I looked at that, and the beginning of Jericho Hill Road is approximately 2,500 feet from the site on Northborough Road, just so we have a number there. In the grand scheme of things for the site, that doesn't make much of a difference, Title V requires you to hold 100 feet to a well, so we're surely much further away than that. And also, since we're in a critical area, we are held to a much higher treatment level for our stormwater standards, so we exceed what we need for that as well. But getting to the presentation now, as you may know, this is a project on 154 Northborough Road, so down to this area is Marlborough, there's a large development across the street with one entrance that's directly across from one of our entrances, and then not depicted on this plan, there's an entrance that's further down as well. What we're showing is a single building that has 20 mixed-use contractor garages, there's some office space in the middle, has a potential to be a variety of uses, but Mr. Bobrowski will speak to that a little bit later. So we have, as you come in, there's a stormwater management area, this is subsurface chambers that captures a lot of runoff from Northborough Road, so we've changed the drainage characteristics slightly along the side of the road, because previously there was a hill here, so you had runoff that went either way. Since we're cutting into that hill, we're moving our high point over here, we're providing a grass swale as an LID technique to get it to a catch basin, which is now going to be a Voort century unit. Previously, it was just a drop inlet. This provides much greater pretreatment for any runoff coming off of the road. And then, we also have a grass channel going to a head wall that discharges into a manhole that we're going to tie the existing culvert across the street in, and we have a riprap swale coming down, just to prevent erosion of the channel through there. To capture stormwater runoff from the parking lot, we have four catch basins, we have one, two, three, and four. Those also go in, they are their own hydrodynamic separators, so same unit is there to provide the most TSS and sediment and pollution removal that we can before infiltrating into the subsurface chambers. We're providing LID approaches to the extent we can, unfortunately, just due to the constrictions that we have on the site, with it not being a very wide site, and getting relief from the rear setbacks through ZBA, and just the groundwater profile on the site with having a high point here and a high point here, your low points end up being underneath the parking. And if we went to some sort of basins or rain gardens or anything like that, they would have to be in those areas, and it just wouldn't make it a feasible project of really any So I will move on to the architectural plan for a minute. This is the proposed elevations, this is the rear elevation, so what you're looking at with this is facing the building from the rear, you have the left side, then the right side, and the middle connector that could have some office space in it, and then this is the front elevation just on the other side of that. So as you can see up at the road, we have a higher grade up at the road, and then we are approximately, it varies, but six to eight feet lower along the back. So you'll just have, you'll just have a first level exposed. When you're looking at the front elevation, you won't see the garage doors or a second set of windows, it's just that. And then this is the longer views, which is difficult to see from where you are, but that's been provided to you as well. And I will move to the lighting plan.
Bill, was that planned, excuse me, was that planned in the last submission? Or is that from the original?
This is from the original submission. So moving to the lighting plan, I believe this has remained largely the same, with the exception of just having them update the layout, so that it illustrates our whole layout that we had had before. There are many wall-mounted lights along the front and along the rear, as well as pole-mounted lights along the back to provide adequate lighting throughout the site. That's all I have, or, well, I guess I should touch upon the septic system as well. Each of these units are served by a private septic system. This building, we'll call it Building A, units one through 10, goes to a sewer manhole and then into a septic tank and pump chamber where it pumps out to the field, and then Building B, units 11 through 20, go to its own tank and pump chamber to pump out to the field. Board of Health has done a review on this, and we've provided additional information to them, and we're waiting for their comments back. A lot of the information provided was just based on use, more than design of it. And based on changes from Fussin O'Neil, we split it into two systems, or, well, two septic tank collection systems with one field. And each, each of these buildings is also being served by a oil-water separator and a non-industrial waste-holding tank, so there's one here and one here. Oil-water separator is, as it sounds, separates oil and water, and then these tanks are lined tanks to prevent leaks, and they have detection systems in them with an alarm that will be at a common area within the building. That's all I have for my presentation, I will...
Bill, three things I'd like you to talk about before you put the mic down. One would be the trash removal plan, the second would be snow storage, and third, could you give the board a picture of where you are with Fussin O'Neil? Are we all done? Have they signed off on everything?
Yes, so we're providing dumpster locations, I believe these are the same location, actually no, these are probably different locations than you saw before, because we didn't get to meet after the last revision. We're providing an area for two dumpsters in this location, and one dumpster here, and then we have four dumpsters over here, and another dumpster located there. Speaking with Joel, the dumpsters are going to be on an as-needed basis, correct me if I'm wrong, but you won't be supplying dumpsters for people unless they request to have a dumpster. So that's the plan for that. For snow removal, what we have is, from my calculations, I looked at what could fit into this area here, this low area, until it gets level with the parking, and you would have seven inches across the parking lot that could fit into there. After that, then we could use this extra parking area as snow storage, pile it a little bit higher in here, as long as it doesn't interfere with the views going in and out. And then, similar, there's a little bit of room behind the dumpsters on either side. Obviously, they'd have to be careful of plantings in that area as well, so might not get too much out of that. This would be the primary snow storage area. And the last review from Fussin O'Neil was, I believe it was 10 or 12 comments, we have addressed those comments, and we're waiting for a response back from them. We believe that it's well along, and that we've addressed what they're looking for, and we think we should have a clean letter back, but we're still waiting for that. And now I will hand it off to Dan, who will answer your traffic questions, I know that was a big concern last time, so I'll let him speak to that.
Thank you. Hi, good evening for the record, my name is Daniel Mills, I'm a Principal Traffic Engineer with MDM Transportation Consultants. We prepared a traffic impact assessment for the proposed development. It involved collection of traffic volumes, review of crash data along the corridor, projections for the amount of traffic that this particular use could generate. We also looked at sightlines to and from the two driveways, and we collected travel speed data along the roadway. With regard to the volume of traffic along Northborough Road, it carries approximately 7,500 vehicles per day. It's about 700 to 1,000 vehicles during the peak hour, so we looked at the critical time periods, one being the morning peak hour, commuter rush hour, and then the evening commuter rush hour. Those are the time periods where if a development is going to have an impact on the traffic conditions, generally it would occur during those times, the interaction between commuter traffic and the development traffic. So we relied on what we call the ITE Trip Generation Manual to develop what should project the amount of traffic from these types of development for this particular size. Generally speaking, it's a relatively inconsequential amount of traffic, generates about 30 vehicles during the morning peak hour, and about, I'm sorry, 35 vehicles during the morning peak hour, and about 30 during the evening peak hour. Of course, there was a split between the two driveways, and folks are going this way towards 495, and this way towards a town. Generally speaking, about 70, I'm sorry, 60, 65% would be heading towards 495, Semirano We also conducted a, I'm going to bring up my board, since we did prepare it, just to give you guys a little better visual of this. So here's our site driveways, here's the site driveway across the street, would be directly across the street, and then the 150 seat, three driveways, about 250 feet to the east of the proposed site driveway. Again, 65% coming to and from the west. It totals about 23 vehicles during the morning peak hour, and about 21 vehicles during the afternoon peak hour. Similarly, was talking about 15 or so vehicles from the east, in the both the AM and the PM time period, so we're not talking a lot of vehicles compared to the 1,000 vehicles that are on there during those time periods. We also looked at site distance from the two driveways, and the sufficient site distance to meet the approximately 35 to 40 mile per hour travel speed along Northborough Road. And we conducted auto-turn analysis through the site for a fire, the town's ladder truck, such that we can show that, demonstrate that there's adequate turning radius at the two driveways coming in to the property and out of the property. We did get review comments from your peer-view consultant, there was generally two comments, but really three points that they made. One was relative to stop signs, one was relative to site distance, and one was relative to traffic counts for 153 Northborough Road. So regarding the stop signs, we are providing stop signs at our driveway. Their comment was that they see the lack of stop signs for the driveways across the street. These aren't under, those aren't, you know, under the project here, these are on private property, really don't have the prerogative to go and install stop signs. With regards to site distance, the 150 seat three driveway is about 250 feet, as I said, to the east. Their concern was folks turning right out of here, cannot see folks turning left out of the site driveway, because there's a little mound in the corner. We did do a visual inspection, and while there is a mound there, it doesn't come into play, you can actually see from this driveway, you can see clearly to the 153, the Stonegate driveway, and vice versa. And then they had made a comment that we did not collect traffic volume data for the 153 driveway, so we collected it last week, we prepared a report, a memo, and we submitted it to them for their review. I believe those are the high points.
Dan, does Fussin O'Neil owe us a letter to sign off on this, too?
Yes, they do.
If the board would like to finish the substantive presentation, I'd ask our landscape architect, Peter Ferland, to grab a microphone and give you information about the proposed landscaping.
Hi, Peter Ferland, Suburban Design Group, Landscape Architect. We did the planting plan for this site. We have revised it to include all native plant materials on it. We meet or exceed the number of plants required for the site by Southborough, we just don't quite meet some of the requirements, like in the areas of parking lots and stuff, because of restrictions on the site. We also are requiring a waiver from the 20-foot buffer, landscape buffer in the rear of the property. So you can see mainly the plantings are limited to the front of the property, we do have a few, a few trees along the backside, and we're limited, because of the grading of where we could even place some of the trees, we also had to consider where snow removal was going to be, because they're going to be pushing the snow there, we couldn't plant over there. So it's basically a foundation of native plants, and then a mix of native trees throughout the front proposed lawn area there. All the plants are at the required size, shrub there, three, three and a half feet, and the caliber of the tree, they're at, three, three and a half inch caliber for all the trees, as required by the town. There was some discussion, I guess, that the grass is not native, that became, was brought up to my attention. So we looked at that issue here. We have roughly 23,000 square feet of lawn area here, and to, basically, if you were going to hide your seed there, it's a $5,000 cost association to it, where if you do natives, like a juniperus horizontalis, which is a more common, you guys probably would know, like a blue juniper, which is just an improved version of a native, we'd have to, you know, and we planted those at four feet spacing, we'd need 1,438 plants. And, you know, I just quickly looked at that, cost associated with that, you'd be looking at about $17,000 for just the plants, and then another installation for it. So it's a significant, it's about a $35,000, so, investment if we went that route. I'm not saying that we would just use juniperus horizontalis, I mean, I probably would introduce some other species, I'm just trying to give you a general idea of why we don't think that's a great idea. The other huge issue with planting this with a native species is maintenance. So if we did use a juniperus, they take, they go six to 12 inches, four foot spacing, means in about three to four years, they'd fill in as a mat, but in that time, you're going to have a weed problem. It's going to be a very high maintenance issue on that, so that's also another consideration. I just could see it becoming a weedy mess, weeds taking over, and inhibiting the growth of the junipers there. I don't know if you want to go through the plants, because they're all natives.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to talk with the board about the uses that we anticipate for the property, but I think I'll save that for later. If the board has any technical questions, we welcome them now. If the board has any technical questions, we welcome them now.
Thank you. The presenters tonight say were very professional.
Thank you.
Appreciate the level of detail and the method, professional way that you presented. Board appreciates that. We're gonna call on the open space for information. Ms. Gillespie will be the next speaker.
Should we be using, should we give her the mic or she got another one? Thank you.
I'm the Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. And, I'd like to thank the planning board for giving me the opportunity to present quickly, a little overview. We submitted a letter and we, the commission is aware that this is a very different approach to landscaping. And, we have planned to come before you in the future and ask for a full-length presentation on this new native pollinator, native plant initiative. But, this project here came up and we thought it was a great opportunity to at least bring forth the ideas and the concepts. And, a lot of that's in this letter. We are not landscape professionals nor plant professionals, and you do have a professional company working with you. But, we also know that many established companies are new to looking, working with native plants on this sort of a concept, which is instead of grass. And, that's what we are here asking for. So, if you wanna switch that? So, why use, this is our motto, why use native plants instead of non-native grass? Because it's beautiful, it's better for the environment. And, after you get through the initial more expensive, you know, planting, over time, it is much cheaper to manage and maintain. You don't need the water, you don't need the chemicals, you don't need constant mowing. So, for the project where the proponent is actually gonna be managing the project or even selling it to someone in the future who is going to be managing it, it's an asset. So, next slide. So, here's some facts. We have fifty-four percent of land is made up of cities and suburbs, forty-one percent is made up of agriculture. We've taken over ninety-five percent of nature. Lawns and exotic ornamental plants have taken over ecologically productive land. That's why we're concerned about this. And if you flip it. So, forty million acres in the United States are covered with lawn. We have to start changing this because they are not healthy for our local insects, pollinators, which then impact plants and up the web of life to us humans up at the top. And, we're being faced with something that's now being called insect amigaden. And, we're losing our insects at an alarming rate. And, we can help put a stop to this destruction by using more native plants everywhere, not just this one project, but this is one place to start. So, they significantly reduce water runoff and flooding. That was something I thought that would be more significant to your low-impact development project. They absorb the way their root system is. It's better than turf grass, it's better than non-native plants for infiltrating water into the soil. Next one. So, we're also using power equipment to manage lawns. Typical lawn mower, one hour equals the same output as a hundred miles in a car. Seventeen million gallons of gas are spilled a year by homeowners. That's homeowners, but still also anytime you're refilling fuel, you're spilling. So, next one. This is a alternative to lawn. It's a sedge. It's being used as native lawn replacement. It looks like lawn, needs to be mowed once a year, like in June, and it can have a beautiful effect, so you'll get the same look, but it's actually a native species. And, there's examples of it. Garden in the Woods in Framingham has several lawns made up of it. And, actually, if you're in the woods and you see a grassy area, just naturally occurring, it often will be this, this species. It can be mowed. So, it's a great alternative. Next slide. That's what the lawn would look like. Why not use it? Next, one annual mow, not constant. And, if you want, you could mow it, you know, a few extra times if you wanted to keep it a little shorter, but it really only needs once a year. There's also wildflowers that can be used. People have a feeling that using native plants, you know, the first people to sort of adopt this maybe went for the, what you're used to, the messy meadow look. Natives can be used in a more traditional landscape look that can be beautiful and also be environmentally appropriate. Next slide. There's a picture of what it looks like. It's not messy. You can do this in some of our more traditional landscaping plans, instead of just seas of grass, you can do this. And, you don't need to mow. This here is a meadow look, it's in the fall. I was just at a presentation where the Director of the Botanical Gardens, Garden in the Woods stated, you know, brown is a color. This is three-season interest. It's not necessarily for your front lawn look, but it's a, it's a very appropriate type of landscaping that can be achieved. Next one. So, why use native plants instead of non-native perennials? Same thing, beautiful, better for the environment, cost-efficient, water-efficient. And, as we're approaching more severe weather patterns, as you know, we go from heavy downpours, we're getting hundred-year storms more frequently, but we're also getting droughts more frequently. Reducing our water use is important. So, next. These are pictures of a garden here in South Borough. We actually had a garden tour yesterday and this garden was featured. That's a look that, who wouldn't like that? And, it supports our pollinators and it's good for the environment. And, it's not messy, it's low and low maintenance. Next slide. Goldenrod can be a beautiful plant. This is a front yard of someone's home. So, we're, we're losing our birds because there's no insects. Most people think, oh, the birds that eat seeds are seed-eating birds. Well, even the birds that eat seeds, they feed their babies caterpillars and insects. And, if we're not planting native plants that the caterpillars use as their host plants, all of these species of birds are disappearing. We're facing a lack of songbirds twenty years from now if we don't start turning things around. I think many of you can remember when you used to pull into the gas station, you'd have to use that windshield washer, the backside to scrape the bugs off your windshield? When was the last time you had to do that in South Borough? You know, they're disappearing at an alarming rate, and this is one area. I know this is about landscaping, but we can do better. And, the bylaw requests that, you know, if you can, you use native plants. And, we're, we know we're pushing it to not just native trees and native shrubs, we're looking at native ground covers. And, that means not artificial, not turf, as you say, artificial, but non-native turf grasses. You can achieve the same look and you can get better environmental benefit by using native species instead of the turf. And, we think there's some opportunity here, particularly, next slide. Guess that's it. The potential we saw was in the back area, and we haven't been able to, as a commission, read any subsequent filings since we were here last week because we haven't had the opportunity to meet. But, we had noticed in the back area, there's, we felt there was an opportunity to use, and I just saw something here that said, New England Wetland Plants, they have meadow mixes. That's an easy fix. But, what about in the front and these grass swales? Is there an opportunity to use either native plants? And, it doesn't have to be the shrubs you were talking about, but you can use, you know, the grass swales. Can, is there a place to use some of the native sedges and grasses? Is there an opportunity to use, and another point that came up, we're not quite sure what's going on between the road and the front of the building? Is there a curb there or can delivery trucks pull up onto the grass and park and run in and make deliveries? Will there be live parking allowed out front? Will the, will the material have to withstand truck or delivery trucks or car tires? That's a consideration, but we think you can find tough native species. And, if you particularly went with some of the low-growing shrubs, it could be a deterrent for people pulling up onto the front area unless you're putting a curb in the length of it. I couldn't tell on the plans, so. That was it. The rest of our information is in the letter we wrote. Thank you for letting us, you know, discuss this with you.
Very good, thank you. Comments, questions?
You answered that question, she had about the landscaping.
Wanna think about it?
Well, I could answer that. We are not proposing to add any curbing to North Borough Road, so that would stay as it's existing. There's not a curb there now, so it would remain that way. I don't know if Peter would like to speak to the landscaping?
What you presented was beautiful, I don't deny that. But, there's a certain amount of maintenance that's gonna be required on that for a good four to five years. Once it's established, it would be nice, but it's gonna, it's basically gonna take a gardener there. You're looking at a half an acre, over an half acre, twenty-three thousand square feet of area for that. I have no problem introducing more native perennials and everything else, but to ask the developer to, to put this expense and it's a commitment for a good five years, I'd say four to five years, is extreme, I think.
We recognize that this is extreme compared to just hydroseeding. However, what's the life of the building? You know, four or five years, and then after that, the reduced maintenance, water, the benefit to the environment, you know, that counts for something. If you do it, you know, you turn on your investment over time and we say you have to have a gardener, well, you know, I think, I think there's ways of doing it that you don't need quite so much of a gardener. I'm not saying it's not getting established, it may not take some time, again, we're not experts, but how much, you know, how often? You see them all the time, and that's another issue that's gonna be coming up. The, they're referred to as mow and blow. They come by, they, how many times, how many times a season do they have to come by and mow? How many times do they come by and blow? You know, that's really going to become, many towns are now prohibiting the blowers in towns, and then you end up with rakes, and then what happens there? Your cost to manage that goes up. The other thing is, we also saw the, why we thought this was a good project to bring this up, sort of unexpectedly, you know, throwing it at the planning board for the first time during a hearing, was that there seems to be a lot of waivers and relief on landscaping being sought, where they can't put trees here, they can't do this, they've got reduced frontage in the road. Those, in our mind, related to reduced cost for landscaping under what a project of this building under traditional zoning would require. So, less trees being put in the back, less, you're talking twenty-three thousand square feet, but how much, I'm not sure what that relates to in the reduced zoning setbacks, which we're not, we have no comment on that except for there's less requirement for landscaping because you don't have the same amount of setbacks. You're asking for waivers on trees. It just seems, you know, looking at how you can incorporate, if you can't do all of the grass, where can you, where can you add more? You know, sections of it. Where can you add native plants? I didn't see in your list, I saw trees and shrubs. It listed ground covers to a certain, you know, in the small prints, to a certain, I don't know, depth or whatever, but there's no ground cover listed. You know, where are there opportunities? This is a pretty small plan with a lot of other detail where I couldn't, it was really hard to make out how much was lawn in between all the other things. It would be nice to have a landscape plan that didn't have, quite so busy maybe, that we could just see where the plants were. But, you know, incorporating more native species, I think you have a great opportunity. And, I also think the planning board has the ability to look at this type of landscaping. Yes, we know it's new, we know it's cutting edge, but we also know it's the way, this is not the first time you're gonna be hearing of this. I mean, it may be the first time you're hearing this request, but it's not gonna be the last. This is the way it's going to be moving statewide because we are in a crisis situation with our local ecology. Thank you.
I just have one comment. We do meet or exceed the number of plants required for the site. We are asking for a waiver for the rear, and we, we can't place them in certain areas, but we did, you know, a certain amount of trees would be required if, on this site. We placed those in the front or elsewhere because we couldn't meet the requirement of them in the parking lot. So, we did do that aspect, I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay. Did I misunderstood, sorry?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, we would accept a condition in an approval that the final landscaping plan will show a mix of grass areas and native ground cover with the board's approval of that plan prior to the issuance of the CO.
Okay.
We think it's a good idea, but somewhere in the middle between cost, efficiency, and beauty lies the answer. With that, I'd like to ask the board if you've received my letter dated July nineteenth, which talks about potential uses on the site? Should be in your packet.
It's in the packet from the last meeting, not tonight's packet.
Well, there'd been a question all along about, you know, exactly what's going in here. You've got twenty spaces, who are we expecting to come, what are they gonna do, what kinds of activities will take place? We've said all along that we've put the uses into four main categories. That would be office space, storage, these are terms used in your bylaw. Office space, storage.
Can I just, can you, can you give them one second to just locate the document so they can follow?
No, it's a letter on my letterhead. I have an extra copy if you need one.
We have it, we just have to.
Yeah, that's July nineteen.
So, at the beginning of last meeting's packet, there was a low development impact statement, and then following that was the emergency response plan, then was the letter from Attorney Bobrowski.
Go ahead. As I said, I do have an extra copy if anybody needs one. So, the terms that are in your bylaw are office storage, private garage, and light manufacturing. We thought it would be useful to try to give you a clearer picture of who likely tenants might be, who we're hoping to get as prospective tenants. First of all, the terms that I just read, office storage, private garage, and light manufacturing are not defined in your bylaw, but they have common sense meanings. We all know what an office is, so I've just attached some definitions here. Space to be used for professional administrative clerical or similar uses. So, we envision that an office probably would be somebody like a craftsman or a tradesman who needs to have a place to do his monthly billing, things of that sort. It might even be somebody that would service those people without having a trade or a craft themselves. Second- Second, private garage, we anticipate that that would be the storage of boats and motor vehicles. I know I'm always looking for a place to store my seventeen-foot whaler. I think it would fit ideally into that slot. Third, uh, private, I'm sorry, storage would be inactive items, including but not limited to the same autos and bolts, boats, but also tools, construction, trade products, raw materials, and manufactured goods. And lastly, light manufacturing, standard definition in many bylaws is processing, fabricating, assembly, and packaging, and/or treatment of items taking place wholly within an enclosed building. Um, I've, I've seen light manufacturing constitute, um, what is essentially, um, processing and, and, uh, assembly of, of items. Um, I, I know of an instance in Walpole where there's a light manufacturing facility that puts together gift packages, and another that actually packages nuts, processes mixed nuts as a, a light manufacturing work. So we then provided a list of who we might see here. Welding is a, uh, something that caught the attention of the fire chief, we'll come back to that in a second. A cabinet maker, plumber, cleaning company, carpet showroom, tile as well, HVAC company, electrician, site contractor, glass company, granite company, printer printing, uh, facility, electrical supply company, plumbing supply company, HVAC supply company, and event party com- uh, company, the storage of tents, the folding chairs, things of that sort. And to, to round that out, we looked at the current and past tenants at one fifty-three and one fifty-five across the street, according to CoStar, which I believe is the, the manager of the building. And you can see the names of the actual companies and how they fit into the various categories that I've just given to you. Welding, uh, I asked Joel to immediately touch base with the fire chief after he wrote that, uh, email, and I know Joel had a conversation with him. Joel, can you report on that?
Yeah, so I'd, I'd given him a call just to, to ask, uh, 'cause he had, he had made the comment, there'd be a difference between if, uh, you know, if it was a welder's base of operation, meaning, you know, that was their office and they stored their welding equipment versus they were actually doing welding there. Um, and so he said that if somebody was actually doing welding there, it could impact, um, what would be required from like a fire suppression standpoint, and so, um, you know, I told him we're, we're building the, you know, planning on building the building on spec. We don't necessarily have a welder there, committed there, we don't know if we'd ever have a welder there. Um, but, um, you know, I understood that that type of use, you know, may impact, um, you know, what would be required to, to, to be in the building or in the space, and I said, well, you know, if we come across a tenant like that, we'll just check in with you and see what's required, and that's where I left it.
So with that in mind, we would accept a condition that in the event, um, any, any prospective tenant triggers matters that are covered by the state building code or the fire code, such as a welder, um, the building would have to be fit out in order to accommodate them, and the fire chief would be notified in advance so that he would have an opportunity to tell us what that means. We did also provide a sample lease, and there's a, a section in it that talks about tenants and their responsibility to other tenants and how they're supposed to interact with management in order to make sure that everybody has a harmonious environment working out there. So this is a pretty, um, important part of the, any special permit that would come because we want to have maximum flexibility in attracting these types of tenants. I spoke at the beginning of the meeting with the chairman and town planner about whether or not the board, uh, if you're inclined to grant the special permit, would allow me to prepare, uh, some draft, uh, at least with regard to this matter. I'm happy to help in a broader way. I know some boards like it and some boards don't. I don't know what your custom is. I don't certainly want to do anything that's not in accordance with your usual, but if it, if the board is interested, I'm happy to take a crack at it. Thank you.
Very good. Is that it?
Yes.
We'll open it up to the board, um, for questions and comments, and then to the public. Mr. Mills?
Thank you, and I echo the chairman's comments about your presentation. Thank you for both. The applicants and Open Space, appreciate that. So I think I'll probably start with, uh, Open Spaces first. So, Ms. Gillespie, is the intent that, I know this is the first time we're seeing it, and it's being proposed by Open Space, but, um, we discussed at one of our last meetings too about updating the master plan. Is that something the, the Open Space team is going to be, or committee is going to be looking to be inserted into the master plan going forward for, um, new applicants as they go, as they come before us? Or has that not been discussed yet, or?
We hadn't discussed about the master plan, but we certainly discussed that every single project should be looking at this. The way the bylaw is currently written absolutely supports our request. It doesn't limit it to native plants being used for everything except for lawn and ground covers. It says native plants, so we think the way the bylaw, even though it hasn't been, um, implemented that way to date, we think it actually already does cover it. We think the crises we're in right now gives you good reason to start looking at, um, actually following through in this way, and we certainly are going to be looking at, um, promoting this and then finding ways, um, to change how landscaping is done. We haven't talked about how you would go about requiring it. Uh, that's not sort of, right now, we're trying to be more, um, using what we have and actually making it a, uh, something people want to adopt, doing it by, um, attraction rather than, you know, honey rather than a hammer, but, um, we think, and I think once you have a few of these and people start seeing the cost savings in landscaping, um, I probably won't be making friends with my landscaper guys, but, um, uh, you know, but there's new ways of doing, there's new ways of doing it, so.
So then, I did hear council say that they were open to the idea of finding a mix and a common ground. I, I assume that you'd be open to partnering with Open Space so that we didn't have to meet again and make sure both parties are on the same page, or is that, are you open to that?
Well, I'd like to reserve the right to come back to the planning board if we can't reach agreement. The, we have, um, one side of the equation, they have the other, you're sort of in the middle, and it's your permit, so I'd like you to referee. I'm not, I'm not pessimistic, I think we can reach agreement, but in the event we don't, I'd like to have, uh, access back here.
Okay. Um, would you be, the Open Space committee be open to that, partnering beforehand before we?
Yes, um, as one member, I can say that. I don't have, um, a form here, but.
Understood, understood.
We talked about this acknowledging that it was something new, and we, you know, we are, are willing to work. I'm encouraged to hear that you're willing to not just say no. I'm encouraged that the planning board is willing to consider it. I'd like to, though, um, put out there thinking about percentage, you know, not five percent. But, and I, and I'm not, again, we're not landscape planners, I'm not really sure what the soil is and your light conditions, we're not going to tell you which plants to use, um, but more, um, you know, just weigh in on the level of additional native species there, because also, if you look in your low-impact development, it does talk about looking at what's there, and you have a native, I mean, aside from the invasive species, a pretty native natural environment there. So adding native species actually does fit into your low-impact, um, development bylaw, some of the requirements there. So, you know, yes, very willing to, um, look at this and hear what the, what you propose and hear what, um, especially, you know, someone who's an expert in landscaping.
Great, thank you. Um, so my next comments had to do with the traffic study. So, uh, Daniel, you mentioned that the, uh, traffic study, there was an addition that was put on afterwards, with the counts that you originally talked to for those viewing at home, which I, I know there are some junkies out there like myself who watch these meetings in our spare time or even live. So, um, the counts you originally gave, were those including, for the total going on North Borough Road, was that including the addition, um, when you, uh, made the adjustment on June, what was it, uh, July twenty-fourth?
Uh, yeah, just to clarify, so, um, our traffic study was based on data that we collected along North Borough Road as well as one fifty-five North Borough. It did capture traffic coming in and out of one fifty-three, but we didn't specifically look at the turns that they were making in and out of one fifty-three. So anybody that would come pass in front of the site and turn left into one fifty-three, they were captured in our traffic count originally. Um, that your peer view consultant just wanted us to clear, just to examine the, the actual turns in and out of the site for one fifty-three, so that's what we did. We provided them with, um, that information.
And I appreciate the, I know it was a scramble when we met a couple times ago to get it done while school was still in session. Again, as, as you know, there's been a history on that road, uh, with the town with multiple fatalities, so, um, I appreciate you taking the effort to get it in when school's in session to get the counts, um, so that we got a accurate view of what's happening there, so.
Thank you.
Daniel, can you also just talk about the, the in-and-out flow of the site, um, from both entrance or both, uh, access points?
Yeah. Yep, so these are both full access, uh, enter and exit driveways. Uh, someone coming from Marlborough can turn right into here and loop around, use one of their bays, come out this way, or they could continue on around the site and exit to and from the secondary driveway, well, the, uh, the easterly driver, I should say. Anyone coming from South Borough can turn in left here, so these are both left turns in and out, right turns in and out. Same with this over here.
How dramatic would it be if it just became enter, enter on the westbound end and exit on the eastbound end?
Um, you just eliminate a lot of the flexibility that, um, folks in this area have to traverse in front of all these bays, um, and vice versa. If someone is coming in and servicing over here and they're destined to this direction, they'll have to come over this way if they're exiting out. So it's, it's, it's really an inconvenient type thing, and, uh, it limits flexibility for, um, the users.
And my, my concern is because right across the street is the other on, or entrance on the road from the other facility, but that is not, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that, uh, accesses all the, um, units or apartments up and back. I think that's a further one down.
I think it does. I think it loops around the, behind the building and connects with, uh, connects with that driveway to, um, Stone Gate.
Um, so that, is that anything you've thought of in the past about making that one-way in the, around the building?
I, I think no, because it, we determined that there's adequate site distance at both driveways, whether you're making a left turn or a right turn in or out. Uh, the only conflict that I think has been identified and it has now been eliminated is the driveway on the east side across the street, but the site distance there is adequate. You said something about a mound earlier, Dan?
Yes, there was a concern that the driveway over here had visibility issues, but there's, there are none. We determined that there are none, so you can see from this driveway, you can see folks coming to and from that driveway, and from this one, obviously, you can see people across the street. So it's a typical four-way intersection. Actually, this is because they're driveways, they have much less volume than a standard, uh, four-way intersection. We have two local roads or two arterial roads come meet together.
I think it actually might cause more conflict. If I'm in unit two and I'm coming from Marlborough, uh, in order to go home to Marlborough, I have to go all the way past eighteen units, make a U-turn, and come back that way, so my temptation, given my lack of patience, is going to be to go out the in driveway.
Yeah, sometimes we're concerned with having too many driveways for a development because usually they're close together. Uh, in this case, they're, they're very well separated, that we don't, you know, we don't see an issue where someone's trying to go in one driveway over here and it's very close, and, um, because they're separated, I think it, I think it works here, um, by having two driveways that service the site, but we don't consolidate all the activity to one driveway, exiting or entering. We have to give the flexibility, as I mentioned.
Yeah, just, I used to drive that, for fourteen years straight, I drove that road twice a day, getting up to Simarano Drive, so nearly T-boned a number of cars coming in and out of there, so my concern is just now with both, an access coming from both ways, as the traffic goes, um, it could be, you've got them both looking across the street and now in both directions. Again, just, I'm not an expert, I just drove it for fourteen years straight.
Sure, and that, there's a lot of credibility to do in that. You have, uh, experience in, in driving the road. Um, again, these do meet the site distance requirements, you can see up and down the road, uh, for either of those driveways.
Okay. Um, and then the, the dumpsters, I know that's not you, um, Daniel, um, you mentioned if the businesses need them, is it just going to be one dumpster for all trash? Are you thinking there's going to be a recyclable dumpster? Um, my preference would be that there would be a condition that we'd have both a recyclable dumpster and, uh, a full, you know, trash.
Okay, um, I'm actually going to let Joel speak to that. He's, uh, looked into the dumpster situation a little bit more.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see an issue with, you know, having a recycle, or recycle dumpster there. Um, we're, we're, we're not planning on, and I don't think it would make any sense to, to plan on having, like, a dumpster for every unit. We obviously don't have the space for that, and they're like eleven hundred and seventy square feet, they don't, they don't all need dumpsters. Um, essentially, you know, you know, I haven't, I haven't nailed it down completely, but, you know, we may have a, you know, a, a common dumpster on site, and then maybe, uh, like, to your point, a, a recycle dumpster, I don't see any issue with that, and then from there, it's basically going to probably be just as, as needed basis, and, you know, we have it designed for twenty units, but depending on how many units somebody takes, if they, um, basically their, their trash responsibility is going to be on them, they would contract with it directly, and we would just provide a space for it, um, and then, you know, so we'll just have to manage, you know, our units and our leases so that we have enough space to accommodate, just the same way we would with parking or anything else. But to your point, to have a, a dumpster on there that handles recycling, that, that doesn't, I don't think that's an issue.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Mr. Jenks?
Good evening, um, I apologize for messing up the schedule last week, and some things just can't be planned, so.
No, not a problem, Mr. Mills. Mr. Jenks.
Where are you with the ZBA? Have you got everything you need now?
We have a variance, and so we're. Can I just interrupt for a second? Phil, did you want to comment on the Mullins Rule?
Oh, yeah, I should do that. Um, I, I think I did, uh, on the meeting where we employed the Mullins Rule. I have filed the necessary papers with the clerks.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, ZBA, you have a variance, and you need a variance and a special permit?
Yes.
And the, very, what does the variance cover?
If I remember correctly, it's for setback, isn't it?
Yes, so, um, what we had done is, when we were in the conceptual phase, looking back at the previous plans, they had a retaining wall across the back, which would count towards yard setbacks, um, and then obviously the building across the front, so we requested a variance for both of those, and were granted both of those. We went out and did a topo of the site and made some tweaks to it so that we could get just grading along the back and eliminate the retaining wall, so we will not need to use that rear setback for the retaining wall, um, but we will be using the variance for the front setback.
And the special permit is?
Two of the uses, if I remember correctly, require a special permit in this district. That would be the, uh, light manufacturing, certainly, and I believe the other one is the private garage.
Okay, and you don't have the two-building issue anymore, so, um, do we have the cover sheet for the plan set?
The one that submitted the curtain or the glasses?
Whatever one is going to be used.
This is the most recent that you distributed on Wednesday, last week, July sixteenth.
Okay, um, I have been by the site, and I'm still not sure where it is on that section of road. On one of the plans, you've got a driveway across the street, and I, is this, is that this?
Yes.
Okay, that helps a lot. And that's where you said you were putting a stop sign in here, but... And that's where you said you were putting a stop sign in here, but you don't control across the street. If you controlled it, would you put a stops, would you want a stop sign there? Is that something you'd advise?
Yeah, it's, I don't see a harm in providing a stop sign on the opposite side of the street.
So have you talked at all with the, who's in control of that project over there now? But have you talked to them at all about what you're planning? They may want a stop sign there too.
Well, I don't, I mean, a stop sign is hardly expensive, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem with a condition that said that, you know, we would consult with the owner across the street and offer to give them a stop sign. The installation will be up to them. We're not going on their property to do it.
What is the width of the two driveways?
Those are 22 feet. It's 22 feet all the way through. So even in the parking area, from the garage doors to the parking is 22-foot aisle.
What do you need for two big trucks?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, your regulations are, I thought it was 22 feet. For two large trucks with the garage doors in front, 22 feet is actually a pretty comfortable number. 18 starts to get a little tight, especially if you have someone that doesn't park fully into the space. Or if you have larger trucks that are sticking out of the space a little bit, it'll get tight. So a site like this, 22 feet is a pretty good amount.
You talked about drains with oil separators. Are those grates in front of the overhead doors? Is that what the plan is?
So I don't believe that it's been determined if they would be grates in front of the doors or if it would pitch into an area drain more towards the center, but it would be something of that arrangement, yes.
What about internal, in the, in the storage or garage area itself?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We haven't determined if we would do it internally or if it would be at the edge of the garage door. But either option would work. I've seen it done both ways.
I'm assuming that's covered by the, by the building code anyway. If you do get a request for an extra dumpster or two or three or four, where do those go?
Well, it's my understanding that we just have a set amount of dumpster space. And if someone comes in and says that they need a dumpster, then Joel will have to tell them that we don't have the space for a dumpster on the site. And they'll either have to work without the dumpster or find another spot.
In other words, there's only room for so many and once we get to that, the next tenant is not going to be able to have a dumpster.
Your HVAC, separate units for each wall-mounted splits, something like that?
Depending on what kind of business you've got going in there, but typically if it's a small office, then it'll just be one of the, the wall-mounted split units on that. If it's something that they're trying to do a bigger space and they need a bigger thing, then we'll have to determine what, what system. So we can, we can rack them on the roof so that they can sit on the roof also. On the back side with a slope, with a slope side, yep, on the back.
Yeah, I would think we'd want some condition that nothing on the front side.
Oh yeah, no, we wouldn't want it on the front side.
Someone mentioned the possibility of parking on the road, FedEx truck pulling up, run in, make a quick delivery. How do you prevent that?
We're not providing any spots along the front of the road currently, and we wouldn't recommend doing that. As far as prevention, it's just going to be have to, going to have to be communication with the drivers if they do start to park along the front that they're not allowed to do that.
Is is there an updated lighting plan in the plan set?
Yes, there is. On the most recent plan set, we have provided an updated lighting plan that has all the appropriate pavement layout and additional lighting on the site as well.
All along the front of the building, you have wall-mounted lights?
That's correct.
How many?
I don't have the exact count here. I can see if I can try and read it off of this.
Was like one a unit or more?
Yeah, it's one a unit and two in the center, so that would be 22 of them along the front. And then it looks like the same thing along the back.
I'm wondering what that's going to look like. I, I think that's a, that's a lot of lighting. I mean.
They've, they've provided the photometrics for how they calculate how the lighting would look. And this, it would go right about to the property line until you hit the 11th unit. And then it goes almost to the edge of the roadway where it starts to dim out based on their schematics.
So, so the light doesn't spill out into the roadway, but if you're in the roadway, looking at the building, are you going to see a source of light?
I'm not sure what they're calculating for the height on these, but I'm assuming these are going to be mounted above the doors so that they'd be maybe seven or eight feet above the ground level through this area. Let me just see what the existing grade is. Okay. Okay, so it's 11 feet out front for the mounting height and 15 in the rear.
So if you're sitting in a car, how many feet away would that be in a car?
If you're sitting in a car, your eye level in a standard car is generally three and a half to four feet above roadway level. So there's about seven feet of difference. The grading along the front generally follows the grading of the road.
And you're, how, what's the frontage? How, how far off the road are those lights?
So at, at the closest point here with 33 feet away, I don't have an exact, let me grab a scale.
On these lights, they're actually all downlights, so they're not, they don't reflect up or out. They're strictly designed for a non-polluted light, so they, they're just a downlight. So they basically light the area below it and out a certain distance. So basically, if you look at the, at the picture back there, when you're driving on the road, the road itself is still dark. So it basically only reflects out for a certain distance.
I, I understand that. The light doesn't spill out onto the road. What I'm asking is if you're driving by, can you see the source of light? Obviously, you'll see the light below, what do these have cans?
They're, they're actually boxes. It's called a cutoff luminaire.
Yeah, it's cutoff luminaire, so.
Okay, so it's a pan.
If you look, if you look at that right there, you'll kind of see the light, where it just reflects down.
Oh, okay. The light source itself is up in the top of that?
Right at the bottom.
Right at the bottom?
Yeah, I mean, it reflects down.
So you will see it?
Well, you'll see it, but it won't be glare in the, or overspill as the photometric plan shows. If you're below it, you'll see it.
Yeah, because I mean, it's two different things. The light coming out, I understand you've planned that so it, that won't light up the road.
Right.
But wow, I don't know how that.
The standard usually is that no glare or overspill will cross the property line. If, if, you know, you're talking about a new facility like this, and that's the standard that we're meeting. The mounted fixture height of 11 feet with a motor vehicle operator at about four feet sitting in his car, he's going to, you know, you're going to see it, but it's, all you're going to see is what it lights up. It's not going to blast out onto the roadway.
All right. I'm not nearly as concerned with who's likely to occupy these units as as I, I think some other board members are. Because no matter who occupies them, the concern ought to be anything that's dangerous. And let's just take welding as an example. So you may be, someone may be concerned about a welding shop going in there. That makes a lot of sense. But there are a lot of other businesses that may be doing welding. So it's the activity that I think is, should be of concern. And I think those are concerns of the fire department and our building commissioner. I don't really see that there are concerns in any case as one member. I'm not, I'm not terribly concerned about it because I think others are going to be looking at that. The building inspector's going to give a CO. And if it's a dangerous activity, he's probably not going to give a CO. But I don't, you know, we can issue a, a site plan approval a year later. That whole project could be sold to somebody else. Tenants can change. We're not going to be looking at who's in there every time you have a change in occupancy. So to try to control it on the first round is, to me, that, that's fire and building. Okay, the last one I think is, can you just run through the LID techniques that you're planning to use for the site?
Sure. So the, the biggest LID approach that we have is along the front with the grass swale. There's also infiltration trench to treat the sidewalk. That's very minor. But the grass swale to treat anything from North Borough Road and then the separator units. We're also trying to disturb as little as possible of the large vegetation that's on the site. When I drove through earlier today, I went right by here and looked. And basically from this driveway down a little bit further past where it appears our limit of work is, is all, it's all thick brush. It looks like there's some small trees that are coming up, but there's nothing substantial. I believe Mr. Chairman has stated in the past that they have cleared this site before and it certainly appears that way. So we're not looking to clear any more of its larger vegetation. You can certainly see where they stopped clearing. There's a jump of 15 feet in tree height through there. Otherwise, it's very difficult to incorporate much more LID approaches just because of the nature of the site. As I said earlier, with having a ridge in here and draining away from the road, you end up with natural drainage patterns that go in here and in this area. And that really wouldn't allow for any development. Because if we, if we tried to take an LID approach with, say, proposing a rain garden or something of that nature in the back here, it essentially takes up most of the units there because it's going to be at least the size of what we're proposing now, subsurface, if not larger than that. And again, we are going with the hydrodynamic separator units, which provide superior amount of pretreatment to standard catch basins and separators and things like that. So basically, again, the LID approach is going with the swale along the front, infiltration trench and then the separator units. The subwatersheds to have half the runoff go in either direction because we have one outfall on this side and then another outfall on that side instead of just concentrating it into one area. And that's our approach to it.
Are you asking for any LID waivers?
We are not. That is something that we would like to discuss with the board as well because reading through the plan contents, it's, at least I don't feel that it's very clear if we should request waivers from certain design principles or if that's something that it comes with the planning board decision, that it's adequate for the plan contents. Because reading through, just to read section 315 of the LID regulations, it says, "The application for an LID special permit shall include the submittal of a LID management plan to the planning board," which is the application as a whole, plans and calculations and narrative. "This LID management plan shall contain sufficient information for the planning board to evaluate the environmental impact, effectiveness and acceptability of the measures to meet the LID site design principles stated below." So to me, that seems like you have the ability to determine if this meets those principles or not, given the nature of the site.
Okay, thank you. I, I fibbed. I do have one more question. In talking about the traffic, you mentioned a couple of times 153. Where is 153 on there? Is that?
So it's about 215 feet east of the proposed site driveway. It's the access to Stonegate Apartments.
Okay, so it is west of the Transformers? No, east?
Yes, yes.
West?
West of the Transformers.
Yes, sorry, I apologize. It is just west. I've got them mixed up in my head.
Thank you. One comment on the conditions. You talked about a condition that the, would allow the planning board to approve the landscaping before a CO was issued. I for one don't like the concept of future approvals. And think a site plan ought to be approved or not approved, but it should stand on its own. I'm all in favor of having conditions. But to approve a site plan and then get But to approve a site plan and then get halfway through the project and argue over the landscaping and say, "Well, if we don't approve the landscaping, then it goes back to the site plan review not being approved." I think that's a, that's a bad situation. So if we can find some way around that.
Maybe this is a good time to ask the, the question I've been thinking about for an hour now. Are we going to continue this again to wait for Fosse and O'Neill to provide the final peer review letters?
We're gonna get through the comments of the board so that we can get the full feel for how much more work is, is needed. But I can tell you that if you were asking us to take action bef- before the, the period of performance runs out, then you should tell us that now, because I would then recommend to the board that we do not approve this site plan.
Well, Mr. Jenks's question might, if we have more time, we can meet with the Open Space Committee, come back perhaps at the next meeting while we're waiting for Fosse and O'Neill, and hopefully we can bang that out. So that was my connection there.
Yes. I think that's, we're on the same page with that.
Thank you.
Which means that the period of approval right now ends on August 13th for both the special permit and the major site plan.
Your time to make the decision?
Yes. And it's not gonna happen. So we have a, if the board is inclined to listen to your request for an extension of the approval period, and the board grants that, we have the letter here that would be signed by the proponent and the chairman that would grant and have an agreement on extending the approval period.
I'm familiar with it.
So we're, we're anticipating that that will happen tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
I am through.
Mr. Stein?
I think it's a, a good idea to, to meet with the Open Space Commission. I was not prepared to approve the site plan, given that the landscaping is still in question. And the concept of hashing that out, quote unquote, in some informal basis after approval does not make sense to me. I would like the Open Space Commission to, to come to a favorable conclusion in terms of landscaping plan before we vote on this project. For the traffic, Dan, wouldn't, wouldn't, as Mr. Mills illustrated, having the westbound entrance or westbound driveway entrance only, and the east, eastern point and egress, wouldn't that alleviate the whole stop sign issue?
So the stop sign question from your peer review consultant was to have a stop sign at this location, which is not our property, which is the property across the street, and also the driveway for Stonegate. That was their, their question.
Obviously, that's less in your control than having it be enter and exit, right? So wouldn't that, wouldn't that just make the whole problem go away?
I'm not sure what the problem is. I don't...
Traffic. That it's an intersection, that you've, you have cars coming out both ways, and am I mistaken?
Nope, you're, you're right. There's traffic. So you would have traffic coming in, so we need to take a left in. So this folks coming out of here would have to wait for this person to, it's, you're, you're eliminating a couple conflict points, but you're not eliminating all the conflict points. And, you know, we've determined that the, the volume, the capacity along Northborough Road, the site distance, the separation of the driveways, all suggest that it's appropriate to have all your movements at this location. Again, we talked about...
So you don't, you don't think that having cars not coming out of that driveway will, won't make a difference? I can't just intuitively understand how having cars not coming out of there wouldn't make it less of an issue?
There's a degree of issue, and we don't, you know, there's, there's a very low degree and then a high degree. If there was an issue with site distance and you wanted to restrict that, if you had a, a lot of conflict between these two movements, if you thought there was gonna be crossing maneuvers, you know, there's a lot of things that may lead you to wanna restrict the exit from here. But based on the parameters of the, currently the operation of Northborough Road and, and the development itself, you know, we don't see as a high, high concern for traffic coming out of this location.
Well, given, you know, I, I've driven on that road a number of times, and given the history of the road, I think that safety is a paramount concern, and it's gonna be my, you know, strong feeling that we would be better off with the entry only at that point and the exit only at the other point.
Okay, something we can revisit with the, with the applicant on the, on that pattern.
Thank you, Dan.
Sure.
In terms of the, the lighting, I think Mr. Jenks raised a very good concern, a very important concern. And we recently had a project of an auto business on Route 9. I think we mitigated that with hours. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. What are the proposed hours of the illumination?
Joel, do you have any? So I guess we'd be open to what the board would like to see for reasonable hours of operation for the site, then?
Because I think driver safety was a concern on that other project, and I think we might be able to apply a similar principle here. So I would recommend maybe for the next meeting that we have a condition that's similar to, you know, for consistency's sake, what we've done in the past under similar conditions, circumstances. I just had, something that occurred to me as I was looking at the plan tonight. You have like a, a walkway on the front of the building, but I don't see, is there a path from the parking area to that front walkway? Like, under what circumstances are people gonna be using that walkway?
There, there's not a path to go there. I will let Joel speak to that.
So there's not a path from the road to the walkway, but...
What about from the parking lot?
Yes. So you, it, it's, it's actually, there's not one showing up there, but there, there should be. Because there is a door there in the front of the, the office section in the middle, and...
If I may just interrupt for one minute, there is actually a walkway along the middle towards the back, towards the handicap parking, just beyond the curb stops. It's the reason for placing the curb stops there is to stop people from going into that walkway that would be there.
Yeah, no, I, I know there's, there's, but I'm saying on the front side, on the roadside, there should be, there should be a walkway right in the middle of that office area. Similarly, as there are essentially access points along the whole front. So essentially, there's a walkway along the front in the event that you ever had office space along the front there. And how you would enter, how you would access that from the, from the back would be either individual units, if you had mezzanine office space in a unit, or coming from the middle office section, because that middle office section is two stories. So you could access it from there.
So the plan's gonna be revised to show the walkway?
Well, yeah, I mean, it should already be on there, but yeah, it's, it's gonna be two lines there, yeah, right in the middle.
And if I may clarify, you're talking from the walkway...
Right where that hand is, right where that hand is.
Yes, correct. So to the building, not to the street.
No, not to the street.
Okay.
But yeah, it's two lines and it should already be there.
So we'll look forward to seeing that on the next plan. Thank you.
Mrs. Latrell?
Good evening. To just tag on to Mr. Stein, so where does that walkway go? There aren't doors at the front of the building. So where are you walking to? And they're little, like, walkways to each unit, it looks like.
So this is the proposed front elevation, with this being the doors in the front where the walkway should be that Joel just pointed out. But then I can let you speak to if you would have windows or doors on individual units.
As it's designed right now, there would be windows here. Those could be changed to doors in the event, like I said, this is not, there would only be doors in the event there was mezzanine space on the inside, and say somebody had office space on the inside. And if somebody wanted more of a, if they wanted their customers entering or wanted more of a presence coming in here versus entering out back, again, there'd have to be a mezzanine here, and we could replace, you know, a window with a door. But again, they'd have to still access it from here. So essentially, they'd have to come from the back of the building, go in that door, go up the stairs to the second level, come out this door, and then go around. Or, like I said, you could have somebody enter through a door here, walk into a shop, and there'd be a mezzanine space, and there could be a door there. But it would all be contained to the site. There'd be no walkway going out to the street. So it, it, it's, like I said, initially, if all these were windows, the only access point would really be that door there. In which case, it'd be really no point for anybody to go out there, because you're really nowhere to go to. But in the event there were doors there, then it could make sense.
So if there were doors there, I think that exacerbates the problem of delivery people pulling over on Northborough Road and just running in.
Yeah.
Which I think is a major traffic issue.
Yeah, I mean, we don't need to have doors there. That was, like I said, it's designed right now for windows, but that was the, that was the thought in case somebody wanted more of an office presence, as opposed to, you know, entering out back here. But I'm not stuck on it.
Has the fire chief reviewed the issue of doors on the front? Don't you need to access at two different walls?
We had a meeting with, was the fire chief at the meeting that we had?
I, I believe he was present, but I'm not 100% certain.
Okay. We had a meeting, an informal meeting with the...
I think windows of a certain height with, meet the access requirement.
I mean, I would assume to get a building permit, you'd have to meet egress issues, right?
Better meet code, yeah.
Okay. Move on from that for now. So if you are not granted the special permits from the CBA, then the only uses will be office and storage?
Those are the only that are allowed by right, yes.
Are there gonna be numbers on, visible numbers on each unit on the front?
On the front? Probably on the back, certainly.
I don't know where, the, I think the fire department mentioned that, the fire chief. I don't know where he wants them. I would think on...
Well, wherever they want them, that's where we'll put them.
Is native vegetation being used in the grass channel?
It's just a standard lawn. It's not native.
So our LID bylaw requests use of native vegetation?
Well, we're gonna address that with the open space, so...
I mean, okay. And also the lid, it's my opinion that a waiver's required, because it says the, the bylaw 174133J1 says the board shall not approve a LID special permit unless LID techniques listed herein have been employed to the maximum extent practical.
Okay, so in requesting that waiver, would we then do it as a blanket to that section, or should we point out, say, rain gardens, buffer strips, use of roof gardens, like individually what we're not using for LID techniques?
I think that you your request needs to be specific as to why you can't use those techniques. So I would think more, the more specific, the better.
To be consistent with previous similar requests, it would, the answer is individually.
Okay, thank you.
On your plans, you list 22% open space. But then on the development impact statement, you say there's zero protected open space. Open space in our bylaw is defined as deed protected in perpetuity. So if it's not open space, it shouldn't be listed as such.
Okay, we'll review that. So if it's not deed protected, then it wouldn't be...
It would not meet the definition of open space in our bylaw. The landscaping, I'm not a landscape architect, but I looked on New England Wildflower Society. They have a little search engine. You can put in plants and find out whether they're native, and... I think 211 of the 269 are non-native. The shrubs, and one of the trees is a non-native.
I don't think that's correct. I, I mean, we...
Bottlebrush buckeye is non-native. The rhododendrons, although there are native rhododendrons, these are not native.
Rhododendron catabians is. And we use Rhododendron catabis album, which is just an improved cultivar of a native species.
This says cata something.
Catabians.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That says non-native. Those are non-native. According to the New England Wildflower Society.
Well, they're working off a different list than I am. I mean, it's, they are improved cultivars. Meaning Rhododendron catabians is a native, and then you have Rhododendron catabis album, which is a white one, which is an improved cultivar of the native. Just to get a Rhododendron catabian is, is, is practically impossible at 3, 3 and 1/2, which you require. So you, you, commercially available is Rhododendron catabian's album. So that's what, what I would consider a native species. Most would consider that.
Except for the New England Wildflower Society. And I'm, you, there's a requirement of that 50-foot buffer, which you've asked for a waiver for, so I don't think it's too much to ask to mitigate that by using native plants and native grasses and native vegetation in the swale.
Well, as we said, we'll, we'll meet with the Open Space Preservation Committee, and we'll try to come up with some understanding with them.
That's all I have. Thank you.
If we, if you elect not to do doors on the front of the building, as you just were talk, discussing, would we need to do lighting on the front of the building? Maybe not at all. Just a thought. Made simple.
We've been at, at this for almost two hours, so first of all, I wanna continue with what I said earlier about the team. This is... This is, you've got a pretty good team here, in my opinion, between your engineering and your consultants and your attorney. So I have confidence that we're going to get through this. But even just a few minutes ago, it seems like you're kind of making this up as you're going along. I mean, I can't remember being in a site plan review where the proponent wasn't sure if there was going to be a window or a door. So we've got to get, get this stuff nailed down. I mentioned, I guess I'll start with, well, the window and the door thing, and then the word mezzanine. So if one of these bays has a mezzanine, you're basically doubling the area, the floor area. So if you double the floor area, you're completely changing the ratio for parking and traffic. You're, you're potentially doubling the size of the building. So we have to know if there's, if either there's going to be no mezzanines or we're going to approve it up to a certain area of mezzanines or all mezzanines, in which case we have to do the recalculations. So we'll ask you to come back on that. It seemed like, it seemed like you're not sure. And again, it seems like you're kind of making it up as you're going along. We have that, you know, the sidewalks to nowhere. The, the traffic counts. I'm a civil engineer and although it's not my expertise for traffic, I see on page three here, table R1, it shows the Northborough Road at the site driveway, and the number of new trips in the morning is 23 and in the afternoon, in the evening, it's 21. So you've got 20 units, and based on the list the council took us through relative to the uses from office to light manufacturing and everything in between, it just doesn't seem believable. This is basically one car trip per unit. And when you think about some of the uses that are allowed, I mean, even if it's a landscaper and he's got a car and he goes there and then he gets in his truck with the trailer, it's just one guy. What if he's got a couple of guys? These numbers just don't seem believable. So maybe when you come back, you can explain to us how you got those numbers.
It is peak hour, Mr. Chairman. It's not trip generation.
No, but the peak hours are two hours.
That's one hour in, two hour period.
Seven to nine AM, four to six PM. That's what it says in the, in the report.
It's one hour in that two hour period.
It, it just doesn't seem believable.
May I?
Sure.
Sure. So council is right, it's actually one hour within that two-hour window that we hone in on. And a lot of these, what I would consider contractor bays, they usually start before seven o'clock, before the commute time period. They usually get their tools together and then they get on the road to get to their job site early, especially in the construction, so the folks that would use the construction bay. But again, it's, it's an average type of condition. Not all facilities are going to operate the same. Some may have one employee, some may have a couple of employees. They may meet at a job site. They may not all come to this location to grab all the tools. They meet, you know, half of the workers may meet at a job site instead of coming to this. So it's, it's industry standard data that we rely on. It's, it's, it's our go-to information, the Institute of Transportation Trip Generation Manual. And it, the category that we use really is, meets the definition for all the uses that you're talking about.
That's, that's very consistent with, with the answers that, from traffic engineers that we've heard for years for all these different projects, including in my, my personal experience outside the board. So again, one of the other members or both, or several, mentioned the, the history of this section of the road and the deep concern for safety, especially as you mentioned, the early morning. There's many, many car trips from Southborough that go by this site to go to the high school. And it's right around that same time, 7:00 AM. So I guess we would ask you to consider a way to verify these numbers after the project is approved, to do some type of traffic counts in and out of that facility to see if it's a bigger concern than these numbers are showing. Something we can think about as a condition.
With what goal in mind, Mr. Chairman?
That if the numbers are significantly higher, we would then have, maybe have reason for more concern and more adjustments with the site.
I think we'll do our best to try to convince you that our information is accurate because the post-permit adjustments, as Mr. Jenk said, with regard to post-hearing CO conditions, good for the goose, good for the gander, I guess. Let us try to reassure you at the next meeting on the traffic counts. Perhaps the data could be acquired for a real facility rather than out of the ITE Trip Generation Manual that would give you a comfort level.
The whole nature of this project, I think you can tell that this, that the board and the other departments in the town are kind of having a challenge in, in getting this through because of the nature of the, of the use of the building. Twenty separate, basically 20 separate uses, 20 separate buildings. They're connected, but this is, this is unlike anything else we have in town.
Yeah, I, I can appreciate the problem. And, you know, I've been doing this a long time. I can't tell you the number of times towns have told me that they wish they had a facility like this because there's no place for most of these people to go, other than their backyard, and nobody wants that. So this is not a bad idea. I long ago helped the Sandwich Town Government, which is in an industrial park, try to figure out what to do with it. Because you look out the second-story window of the town manager's office and there's PortaJohns storage. So, you know, can't we put them somewhere? Well, where? This is the answer. And I don't think it's a bad answer. I just think it's a difficult permitting problem.
It is, especially outside of an industrial park. If this building was in, not on a regular road, but it was within an industrial park that then had a road that went out to the public way, then there'd be less concern.
Agreed.
But again, the location of this building, its closeness to the road, the type of road and the type of traffic that's on the road, students from Southborough, it's just a big concern. And I know that the board isn't going to feel comfortable approving something unless we're sure that it's going to be safe.
We'll work doubly to make you appreciate the traffic picture that we anticipate here. So that's for next meeting.
I think what we'll do is, we had this discussion before, but I, I don't think it went very far relative to the curb or a guardrail.
Mm-hmm.
Or both, front of the building. So I think we should look into that some more, maybe have a discussion with the DPW and the other public safety people relative to their preference. I think it's, there's something more than grass that needs to be there to separate the danger on the street from the site. It'd be nice if you came back with a curb or a guardrail. I know the curb would, would have to be addressed in the drainage. It would change the drainage, the method of drainage. A guardrail wouldn't. But the guardrail, guardrail would address our concerns about people parking out there on the street.
And would you advise us to have that conversation with the DPW super?
Sure.
Okay.
But if she says no, then the board still may say yes.
At least we'll find out what kind of guardrail you use.
So I, over, over the time, I have conversations with the building inspector regarding site plan approval, different site plans around town. And the challenge that he has, first of all, by being essentially one, a one-person department, and his, his ability to perform compliance inspections and also to have some leverage in assuring compliance. And over time, we've, we've seen that if, if the board does a good job with conditions that you, that help you stay in compliance, help you understand what you need to do to stay in compliance, and the building inspector has those, it's easier for him to, to do the inspections and it's easier for, for the proponent to remain in compliance. So for this site, because there's 20 separate units proposed, he and I had a discussion about the huge burden that's going to be placed on him with these 20 proposed moving targets. So what I'm suggesting, and I suggested to him and he said it was worth a try, is that that sample lease that you gave us had some pretty good words in there as far as trying to control what the, the lessee can and can't do. So what I'm suggesting is, before any tenant moves in, that they have to go to the building inspector and put in writing who they are and what they want to do in there before he'll give them an occupancy permit or before you, you will give the tenant a key to get in. Guy says he's going to be a landscape guy and he's going to have lawn mowers and a trailer, fuel, pesticides, trimmers.
Fertilizer.
Fertilizer. Okay. Building inspector now knows it's a landscape company and those type of things are going to be in there. He can then share that with the fire department. So when they make a call to number six, they'll know there's fuel in there. What we also suggested is after the, the tenant moves in, that he takes a picture of his operation and he submits that to the building inspector. Building inspector puts it in the file with the original occupancy permit that outlines what is going to be going on in there. Building inspector may periodically show up at the site and he can cross-check the photograph and the description with what he sees that, on that particular day. We have to reduce the burden that this building is going to put on the building inspector and, and the town. And the burden should be on the tenant. And I don't think that either of these suggestions is very difficult. And if they're a good company, they should take pride in, in showing the town what they're doing and that they're intent to comply with, with the rules.
Yeah, I think as long as the tenant is meant to include the management company, the landlord, if you will, I think some tenants might be scared by going individually to the building inspector. But, you know, perhaps the landlord can tell prospective tenants, we have to do this. It's a condition in the permit. It's relatively painless. Let's go.
That would be fine.
Yeah.
At least to me, we'd have to, again, clear this with the building inspector. And I would ask you that when you come back, you propose a provision in that lease.
Yep.
You propose the language as to how to accomplish this. And then, like you said, if the tenant disappears, if, you know, he pays his last month's rent and the next day he's gone, place is empty, somehow the building inspector should be notified that, that that unit is now empty. It's vacant. And that would help building inspector, would help fire department. And if it's empty, it'd probably help the police. If they, if they patrol in there and they see somebody, gee, number 13's supposed to be empty and there's, there's people in there, something's up.
Okay.
So those would be the three steps. Before you move in, you've got to tell the building inspector what you have and get his signature before you guys give him the key. Follow it up, number of days, weeks, hopefully not too many months, the photograph or photographs submitted to the building inspector, and then a notification when the unit is empty. And then the whole process would start all over again.
I understand.
On the lower impact development, I wish we had, had, you know, gotten into this a lot earlier than where we are right now, but this, this is like the least compliant project I think I've ever seen for, for lid. And I think you, you really have to get serious. You were questioned about this, I think it was on June 4th, and the answer was, well, because of the size of the building and the number of the units, we just can't do it. That's the complete opposite answer. You're supposed to be able to have it fit and still comply with lid. So I think you have too many units. And I think you, you should reduce the size of the building, which would give you more green space. You can have 20 units, you can have 50 units, I don't know. But the footprint of the building and the parking, you've consistently answered that that is what is preventing you from complying with the lid. And that's the opposite of the intention of that section of the, of the code. I'm going to have a hard time, you know, going along with granting that special permit unless you get more serious about the lid. The rest of the board may feel differently, but I just think that you've got way too much density and you're hoping that we're just going to blow off the lid. And I have no intention of going along with that. It's not just right for this site, but it's right for the future people to come in with their site plans and say, well, look what you did at Northborough Road. It's, it's just not right.
If I may, if we incorporate, say, pervious pavers and perhaps rain barrels, rain cisterns, something of that sort, I understand the density is a concern, but does that help alleviate that concern if we switch to different paving materials and, like I said, rain barrels to maintain that density but get more LID into the design approach?
I'm not going to design this for you. I'm just telling you that you don't have, you have a very, very low level of compliance.
I understand your concern.
Basically asking us to waive lid for this site, and I won't go along with that. So like I said a few minutes ago, you've got to get serious about this. And if it means you have to reduce the size of the units or the number of the units to create more green space to accomplish better lower impact development techniques, then that's what you've got to do.
Understood. Thank you.
So I'll open it up to the public. We're in, I think we're in about, starting our third hour. So anyone else, anyone from the public questions or comments? Yes, ma'am. Need to come up and get the microphone.
My name is Carol Gage, 25 Jericho Hill Road. I live within one mile of this development. And I'm concerned about the letter that I saw on your website on the planning board for the meeting, our last meeting, I think it was. There was a letter to Karina Quinn dated July 23rd. And on the section on low-impact development, on the second page of that letter, on number 18, there's a sentence that there are no known private wells within one mile of the site with the exception of irrigation wells. And there was some mention of another page that has something about that. But I'm very concerned because we have a well, we have no town water at our end of town, and that that be in that, all your paperwork correctly because we don't know what is going to go in those buildings now and we certainly don't know what's going to go into them in the future. So I would like that corrected in the paperwork.
Do you want to speak to that, Karina?
It was a letter from the engineer.
Right, we have that. She's going to speak to it right now.
Mrs. Gabe, is it Mrs. Gabe? We received your email on July 27th regarding that concern you had. So I immediately forwarded it to the applicant and his engineer to address it as well as our reviewing consultant to make sure that it wouldn't be missed. And in the interim, they did respond saying they did not see that and were thankful that they were made aware of that and were going to address it.
Anyone else? Mrs. Littrell.
Just one quick thing I missed on my list. On the landscape plan, there's an RC listed that isn't in the key. And then in the key, there's RP, but it's not shown on the plan. There aren't any of those shrubs on the plan?
I will look at that. It's probably a typo. I apologize for that.
Thank you.
I just had for the lighting piece, I know we talked about the Route 9 building, just a tip. I know they didn't accommodate for a way to dim it. They came back about a year later and we reviewed it. It was a distraction, so much a distraction from Route 9 that we asked them to lower it down. So you might want to, whatever comes up, once you get past the lid piece, you know, work with your electrical engineer to make sure that there's a way. Again, because I think that could be a real concern even after it's built, if there are all that lighting's on the front, like Mr. Jenks was saying, that it could be a distraction as you come around that turn. We want it to be in, you know, understanding there's going to be a new building there but not be a distraction for drivers as they go through there. So just a tip.
Yeah, we'll take a look at possibly an hour's plan for when the lighting is on or when all of the lighting is on versus some of the lighting. There's still going to be a need for security in the front of the building. So, but it doesn't need to look like a car dealership.
We've also seen projects where the lights are not on the building. They're out in the landscaping and they project the light onto the face of the building. The light source is not visible to the driver, to the street.
I've seen that.
So, the next planning board meeting is... Is August 7th. Do we have anything on the agenda for the 7th?
It's too soon. It's too soon for us.
It's too soon, right? But in the whole picture of when we meet... So if we don't meet on August 7th... We tried for the 6th, but then we, Tuesday's the 7th. And I think we had four out of the four of us at the last meeting and we weren't sure about Mr. Jenks for the 7th. But as it turns out, it looks like we don't have a need to meet on the 7th. So the next meeting after that would be the 20th?
Yes.
So can anybody make the 20th? Three. And you're looking for five.
How do you say, "I will be in Portugal on the 20th"?
So I guess that means you won't be here?
I won't be.
Can we go there?
Do we have anything scheduled for the 20th?
No.
So we don't have to meet on the 20th. The next day would be the 27th, would be a Monday, the 27th.
I'm still there. That's the two. I'm gone for two weeks with my family. Kids are there for a week, send them home, I'm there for another week.
To rest.
To recover from the wallet expenditure. But I am back the week after Labor Day.
So was the next one September 10th?
September 10th.
First day of Rosh Hashanah.
No. That was, these are the 20th.
These are going to be both wrong because I had it for the 20th. So we'll have to change this and this. So this will be set to September.
What date works for you, counsel, which Monday?
I'm the whole week after Labor Day. The 10th is fine with me. But I'm just pointing out it's the first day of Rosh Hashanah.
17th?
Well, I'm not a celebrant of that holiday, so if it's, but your public may object.
Thank you for telling us that. We try to avoid that probably, but so that with the 17th?
Perfect.
September 17th? Phil? Jesse?
Yep.
Sounds like a plan. So we have... You have it, okay. So what we would do, that's the, what do we say, the 17th? That's Monday. So it would be the 21st is the Friday of that week.
Yes. Oh, for extension, sure.
To extend the approval period would be the, just in case for some reason hurricane or something, we couldn't meet on the 17th, we may be able to work around it and still not extend the, still not miss the approval period.
Just ask me for another extension.
Sure, yeah. So, okay, the letter, the letter that will, if the vote passes, would say that this hearing would be continued to September 17th at 7:00 PM. And the approval period would be extended to September 21st to close of business.
Right.
So Karina, you can go do that. Right, that's for both the lid and the site plan.
Correct.
Both of those public hearings. So while she's doing that, we'll ask Mr. Mills for a motion. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we continue the public hearing for 154 and 156 Northborough Road, major site plan approval to, well, hold on. Sorry, scratched that. Mr. Chairman, I move that we extend the approval period for 154 and 156 Northborough Road for major site plan approval and special permit for lower-impact development for September 21st to close the business.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five to zero. That takes care of the approval period for...
If we didn't get the approval done first, what?
Was that motion for both or just the...
That was for both.
Both, okay. Mr. Mills?
So that's what I'm going to do separately.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for 154 and 156 Northborough Road, major site plan approval for September 17th at 7:00 PM Eastern Time.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? We've continued that hearing. Mr. Mills?
Make a motion we continue the public hearing for 154 and 156 Northborough Road, special permit, lower-impact development for September 17th at 7:05 PM.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? So what we'll do right now is we'll ask Mr. Mills to make another motion for a two-minute recess during which time the letter, the note will come back. Actually, yes. And then we'll go back in session. But while we're out of session, if this motion carries, the public will know that it's just the applicant signing the agreement to extend these dates and the chairman signing the same agreement.
Thank you.
Motion for a two-minute recess.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor? We're in a two-minute recess. Planning board's back in session after a two-minute recess. Next item on the agenda is 25 Park Street on the agenda, but we're going to move on to 12 Pearl Street and do Park Street afterwards. When this item was a discussion item, preliminary subdivision, in our last meeting, I recused myself because my brother lives right down the street there. And I'm going to recuse myself, let the record show that the chair is turned over to Mr. Mills. Thank you.
Just give him a minute to... Takes a while for his aura to leave the room. So Karina, is there an update from last time? Or if you could repeat even what you did, said the last time so Mr. Jenks could hear it, that'd be great. Oh, you did.
Okay, just to do a quick recap and a quick update for everyone present. On July 3rd, Peter Bemis submitted an application with plans dated June 26th for 12 Pearl Street, preliminary subdivision application. with plans dated June 26th for 12 Pearl Street, preliminary subdivision application, where he was proposing to create a two-lot subdivision adjacent to and including number 12 Pearl Street. It was filed with the town clerk, distributed to the various town departments, and to Fussin O'Neill for consultant review. The fire department provided some comments and then emailed me some additional comments, which I'll be more specific about. We received Fussin O'Neill review comments on July 20th. The meeting was continued to this evening, July 23rd. Planning Board action is required at this point by August 20th, FYI. So to add to that, we received a couple of documents from various departments. Conservation Commission submitted an email on Friday, the 27th, which was forwarded to Mr. Bemis indicating that they recognized that there were wetlands near the existing gravel driveway of number 12 Pearl, which will also be the access driveway to the second lot. And that if that was changed in any way and it would impact drainage, for example, if it became paved or pervious, that the applicant would have to come before the Conservation Commission for notice of intent, possibly stormwater management permit for disturbing more than 50% of the lot with a new house driveway, et cetera. We also received information from the Board of Health on Wednesday, July 25th, which was also distributed to the applicant, to the reviewing consultant. Soil testing in the area of the proposed lot was conducted and witnessed in 2000 and met most of the Title V code design requirements for onsite septic system. The soil's data is still valid. And along with the proposed well location would appear to meet all Southborough Board of Health and state Title V code for a single-family home. If the applicant intends to submit an application for a subsurface sewage disposal construction permit to Southborough Board of Health, they may need additional soil tests unless they meet design criteria for an expansion area between the trenches. So new versus repair. Then we also received... A question. The building department received a question from an abutter about when the hearing was going to be continued to, and we explained that it was this evening. So those were the correspondences from the last meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Peter Bemis, engineering and design consultant. So I'm here on behalf of my son, who's the proponent for the project, and Mr. McIntyre. And that's why I'd ask to take it out because there's no one else in the audience. So we threw this one first. So at the last meeting, there was some discussion about not having some commentary from Conservation. I know there was a, I think you were looking for some other departments too, but I don't think you got any other comments, so I have to follow up. The layout, it's Mr. Jenks, I know you weren't here. So the proposal is that we've got an existing 96,000 square foot lot, so a little over two acres, that's here with an existing home on it, 12 Pearl, Mr. McIntyre's residence. And our proposal is to then to subdivide the property to create two parcels and then to waive some of the construction requirements for the subdivision of the road because we don't want this to be a public way. It's gonna be a private way, just for these two homeowners to use the property. But because we would need to generate frontage for the two lots, hence the way. So the way is structured so that it does fully comply with all the lot shape and area requirements as a conventional subdivision. And then at the last meeting, I know a couple of the members had concern about the proximity to wetlands. So we took our plan and we actually went out and flagged these wetlands again because when we originally submitted this, we had the cornerstone wetland line on there. So we retained Echotech to come in and flag the wetlands, and then we surveyed those in. So that's the position on those. There is a culvert here. There are no wetlands upstream of our location other than these that are going off in the northerly direction. These wetlands are going off in the westerly direction and towards Parkerville Road. And this is the limit of that. There's a culvert right here. So our proposal is to construct this driveway and to provide a stormwater management system associated with it. So there'll be a swale with a filter strip associated with that for stormwater, which doesn't exist today. So that would be another form of mitigation, as well as mitigation that we propose to do as part of our house lot here. So the concern that I know a couple of members had was that we'd be doing this in that activity zone. And we reached out to Conservation to have, you know, an assessment of that. And basically, they came back and said, you know, there's already a driveway there. So, you know, it's already an affected area. And by what we're gonna do, we'll be improving it, to some extent, for stormwater management. And that we wouldn't have any further impact with our proposal. So you can see our proposal with the driveway, we're pretty much following existing grade. This is the upper reaches of that, so that's why you see what's happening here. We're filling in basically where some of the ground drops off as you approach the house. And that's what this area is. Otherwise, we're pretty much following existing grade. And that's pretty much what our proposal is. That's what our preliminary plan is to show the board. This is how we intend to divide the lot, how we intend to have access to it. There'll be a maintenance responsibility between these two parcels. One other item was that there is only a 12 and there's an existing 14, so there's not another number available. So we would either be 12A and 12B, or we could put a name on this private way. That's been done in other locations in town. So I would leave that to life safety, fire, and police to determine what they thought was best. Either we'll just be 12A and 12B, or we could come up with a name, and we would take that from any official list that the town has. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Again, in the... Doing as I did before, Ms. Luttrell, ladies first.
Opposites day. So according to the email from the Conservation Commission, they said if that existing driveway were to be changed or modified in any way, it would be subject to the Wetlands Protection Act.
Understood.
So it is being changed and modified.
Well, because what's out there today is really just an open gravel area. So it's a lot wider than what we're looking to try to restrict it, to some extent. We're bringing it down to 14 feet. So as I said to the commission when I had met with them briefly, is that we're looking to define the way, and we were gonna pave it. Because today, it's not paved. It's just an open area of gravel.
So that would be a change?
Yes. Oh, yes. So we have to file, we have to file a notice of intent, and we'd have to file a stormwater SMP application for this proposal. We knew that going in.
Okay.
So both those things would be done. And I'd anticipate with the board's, you know, approval, that would be probably my next step, is to go to Conservation with this as an application to them for approval as part of a definitive subdivision.
So you had the, excuse me, I'm sorry, the wetlands reflagged. So does that driveway still fall within the 20-foot no-touch?
The existing driveway to the, yes, the existing driveway is within the 20-foot.
Okay.
And the proposed driveway is just gonna skirt the edge of it. And we're trying to actually stay out of it with what we're doing. We're skewing it off to the right-hand side, so we'd be pulling things back at the end of the day. But the culvert is already in. We're not gonna change the culvert position.
All right. And do we have those plans?
This is what I had shown Conservation. I didn't submit them, no. I was looking at just, I gave you what I gave you. I didn't have time to give you a revised plan. You would get a new plan when we come in to do the next step. I just made this exhibit so I could discuss it with you tonight. We did all of this from the last time we met.
Right. Well, my concern is that we have plans that show the driveway in the 20-foot no-touch.
I can show you those. I'm just trying to give you as much information as I currently have on this.
Right.
The layout's no different. Everything that we had done is no different. That's exactly where I'd had the driveway before. The only thing that's different is that we flagged the wetlands and I put those circles on where they were.
Right. So on that one, the proposed driveway is not within the 20-foot no-touch?
We're right at the edge of it.
But in the plans we have, it is within the 20-foot no-touch?
Correct. Because again, this is the wetland line that we had on there from the cornerstone plan that we've done for Mr. McIntyre. The wetlands are really more associated with the culvert that's there today. So I can't speak to why they had that shape, but that's the shape that they had had before.
Okay. So there were no large trees shown on the preliminary plan?
No. When we go to definitive, we would show the trees. We would, this is a woodland here, so there's a lot of trees out here.
Right.
Again, preliminary, all I'm trying to do is show you the layout and the concept.
But in our rules and regs, it does ask for existing site features on a preliminary plan.
Again, I think we've given you a lot of detail here with what we have. They're showing the grading. We're showing all of that detail. But I didn't go out and locate all the trees, no.
So the reason I'm asking is that existing lot on Pearl Street, number 14?
Yes.
Is there going to be a buffer of existing trees left when that lot is built?
Yes.
To buffer them?
Yes.
That's all I have.
I don't recall on the last agenda that there was a decision due date on this item. Was there? Or is this add, is this changed?
Oh, there was.
There was, okay.
Both this one and on the other one.
Just procedurally, a decision on what? If this is a preliminary subdivision submission, what is the proponent exactly asking us to do?
We're looking for your advice on going forward with a definitive plan. That's really what the preliminary process is about, is to come in, show you the concept of what we're trying to achieve. You folks are giving me input back, which I've taken from the last meeting and tried to address because you raised the issue about Conservation. So we sought that information from them because they hadn't commented yet. And you'd be giving me guidance on what you want, you know, the roadway to look like. That's why we had Fire weigh in on this. And DPW really hasn't taken a position because, again, it's gonna be privately maintained. So it's not, we're not gonna ever ask anyone to accept this way and have it be a public way. It's gonna serve two homes. It will never do more than that.
Yeah, I just get a little concerned when we get really this deep into a discussion with formalized plans without the proper notification or advertising of a public hearing.
Just from recalling what the chairman said last time about fully drive, which was, this was very similar in the same respects. The Board action on preliminary plan, the Planning Board may disapprove the preliminary plan and state the specific reason therefore, or may approve the preliminary plan with or without modifications, and may suggest changes to be incorporated on a definitive plan. After the review of the plan, the consultant in consultation with the Board of Health, Engineering to the Planning Board, and the Water, Highway, Fire, Police Departments in town. The approval of the preliminary plan does not constitute approval of the subdivision and does not entitle the plan to be recorded. But faculties... But facilitates the preparation of a definitive plan, meeting the Board's requirements. The Board shall, within 60 days of the submission, notify the applicant by certified mail and the town clerk in writing of its action relative to the preliminary plan.
Yep.
And just to add, the state statute said 45 days.
That's fair enough, but...
Basically, it's giving him advice on whether or not we think that it's a valid plan to go forward, that we would consider viewing a complete plan for, before all the engineering, the marking of the trees, and everything else is put in place. So it's a pre-plan.
Okay. Well, I look forward to, you know, a formalized submission. I know, wait the other comments of the board members, but I personally, I guess procedurally, not sure what my comfort level is with the whole preliminary process, I guess. So having said that, I have no questions at this point.
I'm confused, but that's a typical situation.
No, I don't think so.
The, I don't understand the lot line for 12 Pearl Street. Can you just run down that?
Sure. So because of the level of the ink that's involved here, this is two separate lots, and they don't touch anywhere on the side. So if that was what your concern is, that I can assure you. So if we just started here in the southwest corner, so we'd come up the new way around the rounding, and you'd come up along this rounding, up to the corner of the driveway, basically, existing. Come up the easterly to the north, cross the north, and back down all the way to the south. And you would not touch any other line along that. It does look like it comes very close, but it does not. There's separation there. Actually, if I use the other plan, you can see it a little better. Just a little bit. There is a gap right there, okay? Then if we go back to Lot 2, and again, we start southeast this time, and we'll follow up east, come back up along the north, back down that common line, then we're back onto the right-of-way again here. Then come up along the cul-de-sac and back down around the rounding, back into the easterly, southeastern corner. So that, again, doesn't touch anywhere along the 14 line. And those are the two lots. And you basically use about 23,000 or half an acre to do the right-of-way, just to create two lots. So, you know, that's one of the shortcomings of this is because geometry-wise, we have to get in that far. And then we've got to pass the ball along the frontage, then pass the ball from the frontage to the rear.
Okay, show me how you do that, from the front to the rear.
Sure, okay. So the circles are in our CAD drawing. But the first circle would come here and anchor at this position and not touch this sideline. Then it travels along that front, and that's the minimum percentage of the front because it's actually 125 feet from here to there, okay? Then it would pass from the front to the back. So that's how Lot 1 gets done. And then on Lot 2, the same thing happens here. We come down here to the east. We anchor that circle here, then it floats around the frontage before it would touch the sideline. And then that too can go from its front to its rear. So geometrically, this is the right-of-way that has to go in here to support two lots.
Do you stay awake at night thinking of these?
No, I know. This one's a tough one. There's, you know, there... There is another way to do this, but I'd like to continue to go with this for the moment. And I'll approach the subject, but that's the proposal. It's a half-acre zone, and we've got a 30,000 and a 42,000 square foot lot, and basically a half an acre of right-of-way.
Go to the Pearl Street... Where are we? Southeast Drill Hole.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Do you follow up the straight line of 14 Pearl Street? Or do you take the radius there and go up the... How many feet is it? 82-foot run?
Right. So that's the, this little wedge right in here is part of Lot 2. So easterly would be 14's western boundary. Okay, so if I go 14, go to the west. That's our common lot line. Then you'd come to the rounding of the proposed... That's our, that's our common lot line. Then you'd come to the rounding of the proposed right-of-way, and you'd come up along the west here. That's the, that's part of Lot Two that we're creating. So there's a, there's a little bit of a handle down in here.
A little appendix that you got hanging down there.
And, and I mean, all, all this could technically go away, because we don't really need any of this until you get to here. So all of this land area, it, it's meaningless. I mean, we can cut it off and call it open space. Doesn't matter. Because it's not, it's not going to be used or touched or anything through that whole stretch, which, it's just the remnants of geometry, unfortunately. And that's, that's forced upon us because of zoning. Zoning tells us, it has to, has to have a certain amount of frontage, a certain amount of area, but then also tells us it has to have a certain shape. So this is what comes out of zoning. Back in the day, we could have done this a lot simpler.
Yeah. And we can't, this board can't do anything about that.
Unfortunately, no. But you, you do have one provision, and that's, Mr. Mills, do you want to bring anything to the table before I go on? Cause I, so what we can do, and I'll, and I'll bring this up, because, because we, I did do this already with you once. We showed you how we could do a major residential development and be a lot more flexible. So I do have a, a quick sketch, and I'm sorry, I don't have it to distribute to everybody, but I'll just show you kind of on paper where this goes. This was a preferred subdivision now to try to get some of the ugliness of this out of the way and still do two lots.
Had you submitted, you hadn't submitted this previously?
I'm just going to show, just, just show, show an idea. So that's, that's just getting rid of the cul-de-sac. So basically, it's just the right-of-way. You get rid of the cul-de-sac at the end. You're just putting in enough frontage to get there, but you still have all of that same geometry at the beginning. And then this would be, you cut out all the right-of-way, because you only need to have eighty feet of frontage under a major residential development provision.
On the...
If we go to a major residential development, which you allow for smaller developments, all we need is eighty feet of frontage. So what we would do is come down here to the beginning of the road. After I get to Station about fifty, about sixty, I've got eighty feet of frontage for, for Lot Two, and I've got eighty feet of frontage for Lot One. So I'd have, basically, I could stop right here. Just have a little tiny right-of-way that came in. I've created my hundred and sixty feet of frontage that I need. Then I would create my two lots, and then I would just carve off open space around the whole property. We'd just take whatever's still natural, where all the trees are, and just carve out basically two twenty-five thousand square foot areas for Mr. McIntyre's existing home and then the proposed home that we want to do. And I, we could do that, if you, if you feel like that's a better approach. We need to have a minimum of thirty-five percent open space, I think is the way I would look at the number. Because we're not going to do multifamily, we're just going to do traditional homes. And I talked to Mr. McIntyre about it outside, just, just before the meeting, just to say, you know, we, my son obviously wants to try to do something here. Mr. McIntyre would like to do something here. I like, you know, the flexibility in that provision in the bylaw. I thought it might be a little complicated, but it'll look a lot better on paper than this. If you want to go in that direction instead, and I can, that's a special permit with you as a, as a cemental under major residential development.
You start there, at Station Eighty?
Yeah, somewhere in there. I, I'm not, I, I did that really on the fly with what I already had had. I mean, we could reduce the right-of-way considerably too, so it doesn't look so pan-handily down here. Because we really just need to create eighty feet of frontage for each parcel to stand on its own. There's a lot of trees, you know, in through here. Mr. McIntyre has overhead services for his, his utility right now, but they kind of weaved it right through the trees. But there's, there's quite a bit of woodland here. There's a lot of woodland up through in here, obviously, today. And it's our intent to try to save all of that anyways. You know, Zach doesn't want to be, doesn't want to be in their backyard, and they don't want, you know, vice versa. No, everyone's going to want their privacy and their space.
And that is, uh, that is not a paved?
No, it's gravel way right now. And, and so that would be, the other thing was when I met with Conservation, the thing that they didn't like about this was that the, because it's gravel, it can wash into the, into this. So we talked about maybe having something restored, but they actually kind of liked the gravel in a way, because it was still a permeable surface versus a paved surface. So what we talked about was it, trying to find a way to make it more stable, yet still environmentally friendly. So that could be something that we would work towards in the, in the process with you folks under a special permit. We're going to, if we go special permit, I gotta do lid. I mean, I've got a lot of permits to do with you, but we're, you know, if we're marching the right march and we're doing the right things, then I, I think we all get what we want at the end of the day.
Could you do that with like, just a binder?
Possibly, yeah. There's permeable pavements that might be appropriate. Maybe, you know, that first section would, would be still paved. And I can look into a permeable pavement or something to that effect, or a paver of some sort. And just, and it was also mentioned at the last meeting, you know, if you look at the global area here, we've got about twenty-five acres of land all around all of this. And the idea was that, you know, this kind of just precludes what can happen here. Basically, you shut the door, you got these two houses, and that's it.
Do you, who owns that land?
Uh, abutters that are identified on here. They have other ways to get in. They don't have to come in this way. It's not like this, it's just, this would be a way to get in.
So are you, I know the, the pre-plan before us is...
Yeah, it's a, it's a preliminary, but the whole point of a preliminary is to get these ideas on the table and to get a direction. And we, we actually broached the subject, if you recall, informally with the other application I had before you, which is the one at Foley. It's just, again, putting everything on the table and showing you the pros and cons. You know, Foley, right now, we have as a conventional plan, but we, we have to waive a lot of requirements. And it may be, it may be easier at the end of the day to do that one the same way, because of the extent of waivers. But I'll let you folks make that decision. In the case of this right-of-way, that's, that's right up, this is straight out of your book. There's nothing I need a waiver on, except for not building it to a town standard, because we don't want it to be a town public way. And I don't think the town wants to maintain, um, about five hundred feet of road for two houses. It doesn't make sense, you know, from a fiscal management perspective.
Yeah.
If you were, um, for Lot Two, you were drafting the deed description, where would you start and end?
My point of beginning would be the Drill Hole southeast.
Not, not, not north of that, right there?
I could do that too. Oh, oh, at, at the end of the day, when we do the geometry for this?
Yeah.
The, the, the issue is that we're trying to minimize how much road we have to put in here. So I might just come up with a smaller way, if you allowed me to, under major residential development, and just put like a, you know, a twenty-five foot way, because I don't need more than that, and just get the eighty feet of frontage. Just so the building inspector gets what he needs, and, because you folks are really going to do it through special permit now, if we go in that direction. Otherwise, I, I, I have, I end up with those little handles at the end, because I need to create the frontage.
Can I ask a quick question, Andy?
Let me, go ahead.
I, I guess I'm just looking for clarification. You, you create two lots, or you have one and you subdivide one off? And the right-of-way becomes a parcel at the Registry of Deeds?
Yes.
And who pays taxes on that?
So what I found with most communities, when we do these kind of private ways, is that it doesn't, it become a taxable portion, because you're, you're using it to gain access to the lot. And I think when the assessor does its assessments, it, it has consideration on the fact that it's there.
So who owns that?
No, the, the two private parties would have a half interest in it. That's how I would see this one done. So they would each...
Not on their property. In other words, you wouldn't draw a property line through the center and they pay taxes to that?
No, no. It's not, it's not that. It's a way.
It's a way.
It would be, but it'd be a private way that lots one and two are the only beneficiaries of.
And no one pays taxes on it?
No. Typically, it's not been, I've never seen an assessing office assess you on the way, even though it's not going to ever be made public and the, and the rights are retained by those two lots. So they both have a half interest in it.
Because currently, someone pays tax on that property.
On the whole thing right now, that's right. The two, the full two acres are taxed. And at the end of the day, twenty thousand less will be taxed, but it'll certainly be a lot more than the current tax.
Yeah, I just wanted to, yeah, just understand.
So I, I've got, I've had three and four and five lot private ways. And again, it's either the, the private interests are just divvied up.
And this is similar to like Lahey Estates, if you're familiar with that, that seventy-four, seventy-six Marlboro Road, where they had a similar type of...
Oh, yeah, they did this, they did, that's, that's basically what they did, was a right-of-way, exactly. They put in a private way, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, but this, I don't remember when the board did that. Actually, that would have been a good, good example to have for the board tonight, and I didn't think of that. So.
Okay. Let's see. So the, the action for the board is either to approve, disapprove, or approve the conditions. To get an idea based off of the submission, we have until, it's August twentieth. We're not meeting again until September seventeenth.
You're not going to meet at all in August?
That's the way it looks at this point.
Not unless we have, um, formal application.
Okay.
Or something comes up in A and R, or is it required?
I heard that being discussed earlier, but I, you know, you're going to meet a whole week. One week from now, I thought, was the original date, and then it started moving.
Because of the vacations that were discussed?
Yeah, no, I understand.
So, um, to get a feel, I mean, we still have the, uh, August seventh one as a possibility, right? There's nothing on the agenda, but if we had to meet, we could. Trying to get a feel of the board members, if they're ready to, um, give direction on this request tonight. Is there a feeling if people are ready?
I'm not. I, I need a little bit of time to let this sink in. This is about the weirdest configuration I've ever seen, which may not, I don't want to imply it's bad. It's just going to take me a little time to let all this sink in. Particularly with the possibility of something that might make a lot more sense. I, I... Yeah, I need more time.
I, I would not be voting to, or I would abstain if a vote was proposed tonight.
Yeah, I don't know what I would vote on tonight, because we have a plan that the, the wetlands line is evidently changed on. And then there's the MRD that's out there, so there's a lot floating around.
So I guess, um, the question, to be fair to the applicant, would be what other information would we want for the next time we were to meet, so that we could make a decision? Or guidance to him, or going forward as to what we want to see in the new plan? If he goes to the, the full submission. So, um, I think if we have requests that we want to see more information before it goes forward, and we want to meet, I would say then... The seventh? I can't do, I can't do that week at all.
This week?
Yeah, so we meet August seventh, and I believe this would be the only thing on the agenda at the time. We can do that, if it's just to get more comfortable with the plan, to say, hey, these are what the conditions would be. But I think it would be fair to let Mr. Bemis know what we're looking, why we need to take some more time.
And we could commit to getting an MRD application, so it's just not as rudimentary as what I gave you. So something that would be in this same format that you've already seen from us, with the detail, you know, articulating all those points. I could do that and have it to you for your packet, say, you know, this Thursday. Is that when you need to get them out by? Because I could do that.
Typically, for, um, public to have the ability to view information and for the planning board to have time, we like to have seven days in advance.
Well, that's today.
Right.
So I could definitely have it to you for Thursday, though.
This is, it becomes very expedited. We do have, but no, but, I think you only need a majority. You need three out of five members.
Right.
To act.
Mm-hmm.
So we do have another meeting scheduled on the twentieth, which is the last day for action. Depending on who's available, but I, I don't have that information. Because you're not in Don, so it would have to be Jessie, Mimi, and Phil. And I, Jessie's not available. Oh, you are back the next day.
That's the day I return?
Yeah.
From a trip to Maine?
Yeah.
I don't think it's wise to count on me being present, given my workload and such.
Okay. So I guess, um, it would be up to the board if, if they're willing to receive the information on Thursday, and that would be enough time to view on the seventh or eighth. The only other chance would be the Thursday, which is the ninth. But that's still just one day. And then if it's a major residential, you're still asking for a preliminary subdivision.
Exactly. I'm just looking for direction, and then we would, we would go and, and process. That's what we did for the one on Boston Road, is that we gave you concepts, and then we picked the concept that everyone felt more comfortable with.
Right, as part of the preliminary subdivision application. It's not an, an MRD application. It's still under preliminary, so that Peter has guidance going forward, if it's worth it or not, to pursue that avenue. He just wants a path.
Right.
That would be most likely acceptable, but anything can happen in the definitive.
And, and just, I, I just see, this is, this, this, what I'm showing you tonight is kind of an offshoot of the discussion that we've had, is that I've, you know, I, I understand there's been some, um, concern. So basically, by taking that approach, it, it starts to address some of the concerns that are being raised. They want, people want to see buffer zones. Well, I can define them better. And so I, I can put that together. I can commit to you to have it in for Thursday. It can be emailed to everyone, and I can give you hard copies, and you can put it on the website.
So that's up to the board to accept that, I...
To answer your question, Mr. Chairman, I'm not looking for more information. I'm looking for the opportunity to understand what he's put in front of us tonight.
Okay. That's fair. Any other requests?
Well, if you're looking for my, my opinion.
I'd like your opinion.
This may be shocking, but I like the, uh, the flex better than the, the conventional.
I don't dislike it either, so I, I'm inclined to go in that direction, and I'll put the effort in to get it to you. So, thank you.
Jessie, any additional? Okay. So we continue to the seventh. Is there, everyone okay with going with that? We get the paperwork on the Thursday. We look at it over the weekend. It's not a full week, but... Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yep.
And I forget, Mimi, was that the day you said you, you couldn't start until like seven-thirty?
No, the seventh is good. The sixth, I couldn't.
Okay. Yeah, I can't do the sixth either. Okay. So we'll, I don't think there's a vote. We don't need to vote to continue it, we're just, we'll look at that.
I'll see you on the seventh. Thank you very much. I, I greatly appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Okay.
And Andy, I'll post an agenda for, um, Tuesday, August seventh.
Seven o'clock, yeah. Dawn?
Dawn?
I will have to confirm the room, um, and get that squared away.
Let the record show that, uh, the chairmanship is going back to Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Next item on the agenda is Twenty-Five Park Street, preliminary subdivision. Has the town planner to give us the update on this agenda item? That's it, that's it, Karina, yes, thank you.
Okay, this was a preliminary subdivision application of the Twenty-Five Park Street, um, in the vicinity of Foley Drive. The applicant, uh, submitted on July third, uh, was filed with the town clerk, distributed to town departments. We received, um, three iterations of comments from the fire department. Fussin O'Neil reviewed the plan, uh, as a town's reviewing consultant. We met, the first planning board meeting was on July twenty-third. Action is required by the planning board by August twentieth. In addition, we received, uh, review comments from the Board of Health on July twenty-fifth. And generally, they were concerned that, um, it's feasible to site septic systems on the lots as proposed, based on the information they have with soil testing and the existing conditions on site. The Board of Health provided, uh, information regarding, um, tributary waters, or stream, or wetland, to drink, surface-drinking water supply, and underground piping, which requires certain buffers. Some have to be a hundred feet, the septic, the septic system has to be a hundred feet, some have to be two hundred feet. And based on that, Board of Health has concerns that it's feasible. The other comments were from the fire department, um, who submitted their standard comments. Then followed up, um, with that they were not, um, concerned with the under-numbered, or the access, cause a twenty-foot wide access does not pertain to one and two families, I'm good with the access whis for both plans. Then I received a follow-up call from the fire department chief, um, with concerns whether the cul-de-sac was actually going to be built, or if it was just going to be a straight-through driveway. And he was concerned that there'd be enough room for the fire truck to do a turnaround using the proposed driveways versus having a actual turnaround there with a cul-de-sac. And that's what I had. And there was also in a butter who called in asking, um, about the meeting held on the twenty-third, and I pointed him to the YouTube video by Southborough Access Media. And that's what I have.
Okay.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Bemis.
Good evening.
You're on.
Okay, thank you, um, Peter Bemis, engineer and design here on behalf of the Morrow family. So I know some of you have already seen this, Mr. Jenks, you were not in attendance, so I'm gonna just kinda go through the whole proposal. The zoning line is located right here. So this piece, um, is all contained from this point forward, so this'll be the northern section, is Business Village. And then from this smaller portion where the existing, uh, Morrow family homestead is located, is Residence B. Foley Drive is here, um, this property had no frontage on any way, it was basically two, a little over two acres of land, number Twenty-Five Park Street, because of its connection to Park Street here, well before there was ever a Foley Drive and everything else going there, 'cause the Morrow family has been here for a number of years. I think it was Calvin's parents, uh, that actually lived here prior to him. So when, um, Calvin and Brian, uh, lived in the home that's located right here at Two Foley, they did a land swap before Brian sold his home. And a wedge of land was given to Calvin's piece, and then a wedge was taken away from Calvin's piece and given to Brian's piece, 'cause they basically had, Brian's piece had minimum, uh, area requirements to fulfill, uh, on, so that Calvin's property would have access to Foley Drive. And that's where the driveway had, had come through, and the driveway goes right around the back of the building. So our proposal is to retain the homestead, uh, with this, this, um, plan, the way it's drawn. Uh, we are providing a way coming off of Foley Drive, so it basically comes at the end of the cul-de-sac, and then comes in and comes right through, and we are showing, again, geometrically, a cul-de-sac. But we don't wanna build any of this, we wanna waive it all. Uh, the pavement width is a little bit wider than what we had in the last proposal. Um, in the last proposal, we were just over two acres, this is just over two acres, but in the, and we have an existing house, but in this case, we're creating two additional lots, not just one additional lot. And from the fire, uh, chief's perspective, um, I explained this to him, and I, we did do turning radiuses with our auto-turn software. So we show how his E-one fire apparatus can come in, back, and leave. So all those turning movements are available, but not through a, a paved cul-de-sac, we just didn't wanna pave it, 'cause again, we don't see this being a maintained way. This will be a private way owned by these three, um, house lots. Having said all of that, um, and, and, you know, noting that this is what the conventional plan looks like, I need a waiver for not only construction requirements, but I need a waiver on geometry. Whereas in the last proposal, that met all your requirements, you didn't have to give me any waivers, we're just gonna waive construction requirements. In this one, I need waivers for everything. Um, it's a thirty-five-foot wide right-of-way, if I make it any wider, I don't comply with zoning for the front yard setback. I'm pretty much right at my, you know, my minimum lot area is, I'm at twenty-six thousand, I'm at twenty-five thousand, and this one's, uh, twenty-five and change. And we're using every square inch of this place, and I've got about a quarter of an acre in my right-of-way. I know, um, I was trying to do this as a traditional, you know, cul-de-sac, going through preliminary to definitive, figuring that was the most expeditious way of doing this. But again, if I come back here and we did this as an open-space development, like we had said before, there's a lot more flexibility. And I know, uh, Mr. Stein, you had mentioned, it'd be nice to get some kind of open-space corridor through here. You know, if I do it that way, I'll have a lot more flexibility in where the open space goes. The restrictions that you have, uh, for generating open space, in this parcel, just because of the way the geometry is, could, could get this difficult. I don't, I know we had this conversation, uh, to get thirty-five percent open space may be difficult, just because I've got these really weird lot shapes here, and I, I do, I wouldn't wanna have it disjointed. There's no way I can take a little bit of open space from down here and transfer it over there, uh, because of the way this driveway's shaped. So if, if I've got a little bit of flexibility, and, you know, where the numbers come in, then I think that could work. And we could go, we could just have this one segue into a, an MRD as well. But if we don't have to go there, this, I would need to have the waivers. The cul-de-sac is only two hundred and, um, fifty feet long, the whole, the whole right-of-way, so it does work, but you'd have to be waving it down to thirty-five feet wide, I cannot go wider than that. The Board of Health comment on, on soil, soil testing, we, we did soil testing here that they witnessed for the replacement of this system, so I am close enough to this lot line that I know I can support the two here. The only area that they never saw us test was over here, I did that a long time ago, um, with, uh, when Calvin was still alive. It was over here by the barn. So I just know we've done some soil testing, and I'm confident that we're gonna be able to support a septic system out there, but the Board of Health didn't witness it. So, you know, we'll have to do that with them when we go to definitive, or if we go to, um, even an MRD. I, I'm gonna still have, you know, lots, I'll have areas, I'll have septic systems on private lots, we're not gonna do a common septic system here. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Oh, and a one more thing, uh, so the Morrow family asked if they, if we were gonna name this, because again, oh, going back to public safety, we already have a one and a two Foley, there's no numbers left on Foley, uh, so this gets named something else. It, it definitely doesn't wanna be Park, um, chief agreed with me on that, that there's no way this, this has any connection to Park Street. Um, so the thought that we had was to call, and they, they had said Morrow's Farm Lane. Uh, I know you don't like apostrophe S, so I would just eliminate that part and just make it Morrow Farm Lane, as an idea, to, uh, to kinda have it in the memory of Calvin Morrow, who was, uh, quite involved in, uh, in Southborough, for those of you that may not know him personally. So that's my presentation, thank you.
Thank you, opener up to the board, Mr. Mills.
So how long ago did you do that soil testing, um, near the barn?
It was a long time ago, I was a young man. But soils don't change, so I'm pretty confident that, uh, it's not gonna be any different, uh, today than when it was yesterday. I'm confident of that.
So, and if you were, were you, when you came in two times ago, and originally talked about it.
Yes, yes.
Putting the second, or one of the homes up on the hill, having them up, up on the hill.
Put them both over here, right.
Is it still feasible or not?
I think it is, yeah, that, I mean, if, if we go in that direction, that's probably what I would do, and just, you know, chunk off that as the open space, and then you've got the corridor coming through, so it kinda makes some sense.
Personally, I'd like to see that.
Okay. Uh, you know, again, ideally, if there was a way that the barn could be preserved, I mean, that would just make it all perfect, but I, I just don't wanna have, I don't wanna s- commit to that. I just don't see the barn, um, having a, a much longer life, 'cause it's gonna fall down on its own, regardless of whether we try to save it or not. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jenks.
I think you just answered my first question, that was what's gonna happen with the barn. I'm wondering if a field trip to the site would be helpful.
I'd be more than glad to meet you there, um, you know, the barn's kinda neat to look at, if you wanna do that.
I'd, it's been a long time since, since I've been down there.
So what I, what I'd do is make the same commitment to you by Thursday, I, I hope, looking at my son, 'cause somebody's gonna have to help me with these. Uh, we could try to do an MRD, you know, just to get you at least an idea of what direction it's going in, and if you, you know, that way you feel more comfortable with it, maybe we do this one to the next meeting, too. But I'd be glad to meet you there, you know, Friday, or the weekend if, if need be. I, I didn't get away this past weekend, but if, if you wanna do it on the weekend, I'd be glad to meet you there. It's the least I can do for the Morrows, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, uh, pretty much in the same situation as on the last one, that I just need a little bit of, uh, time to digest. What is the, coming off of the, off of Foley Drive? Yeah, it, it, uh, comes down, and then there's a little bump out on the road, what is that?
Yep, yep, so I'll just follow it, so, so again, this'll be the, um, the northeast, if you will, um, we'd be coming down here, south-west, and then along. So this is really boundary that already exists, uh, for Lot Two. Okay, so we're just following right on boundary.
Okay.
So I've, I've created no frontage on anything other than Lot Two. Then it just starts to go on, so there's a, there's a rounding here, you go right around the cul-de-sac, another rounding, we're parallel with Lot Two, and then a rounding back. So the frontages only start right here, and then again, if you start taking the circle, the circle can't start until it gets to about this position, then it slides along its frontage, passes to the back, so that's, um, our Lot One, then Lot Two. Again, we start here, and, and we're, this line is a function of that circle floating right around, it never touches, like, it's getting AutoCAD, so again, it's ugly, but that's how we have to make it work. And then we hit here, and that, that house is behind the frontage that starts for Lot Three. And again, the circle starts right there, and it goes right around again. So I know, when you say you stay up late at night trying to make these things work, you almost have to sometimes.
So, back to where the circle starts for the, uh, existing house.
Yep, that'd be here, yep.
This plan shows, you've, you've got a roadway that goes, or a driveway that goes all the way around the house.
Yes, sir, that, that's existing, that's how Calvin had accessed his home for, you know, God knows how long.
What's, what's changing with the end of that?
Yeah, so, so the garage is located here, which is, um, on, or about the lot line, so that, that garage, there's a note to say it, it has to be raised. Um, and all we did was just bring the driveway back in again, so, so the driveway came around the back and it tied in. And I believe it's Sylvia Morrow that lives in the home, uh, currently. Or it's Lisa, I'm trying to remember the girls, there's, there's too many names to remember.
Okay, Peter, the, um.
I think it's Lisa.
This piece that's shown coming in.
That's the driveway, yes, yes.
What's the difference between here and here?
That's, so existing, so that where you, where your pencil started, um, that's, that's existing, there'd be a new portion of driveway. I mean, Walter probably could've left it alone, we, we're really just trying to show you that we're eliminating this part of the driveway in front of the garage.
Okay.
That's really what he was doing, was to, we're trying to minimize how much pavement we have here, 'cause we, we did do a drainage analysis with this, you know, be, be it somewhat rudimentary, we just wanna make sure that we had enough, um, allocation for our stormwater management, 'cause, 'cause we knew Fussin O'Neil was gonna look at it, just like on the previous one, we did enough to make sure that it was gonna work. I don't wanna submit something that, that I know won't work.
Then you've done the same on the other, other end of the driveway?
Yes, sir, same thing, same thing, we just changed the geometry just a little bit.
Okay.
And we wanted you to see that we're, if you, again, if you, when you, the field trip will be well worth it, because then you can come up here and you'll see how they use the home today. It seems kinda weird to have all that driveway there, but when you go there, it makes perfect sense, it goes right into the back door, and, um, that's where I meet with the family when I go up there, and it, everybody parks there.
I don't know if anyone else is interested in going, you know it pretty well. Yeah, can, is that something we can get you to arrange?
I can arrange it, what time, when?
Uh, I'll do, like I said, if, if you don't mind not doing it on the weekend, if the weekend is what you need, then I will, I will do it with you. But I would say that I could do the sketch by Thursday, so Thursday night or Friday would be. And I think Thursday night I have a public hearing, so I'd say Friday would probably be the best, if you could.
So we could actually just.
And if only two members go, it's not, you don't have to post it or anything, right?
If it's only two members, it doesn't have to be posted, I believe. I think you can go on a sidewalk.
Without, it's.
As long as you're not.
As long as you don't deliberate.
Okay. Dawn, I mean, you, you, you must've gone to Calvin's house, right? See, do you know this at all, do you need to, you wanna get out there?
Um, it's been a long time since I, I was down in that area, but, um, let's pick a time on Friday.
Okay, yeah, yeah, you, you pick the time, I'll make it work, as long as it's not, I have an eight o'clock water test in Hollis, then after that, I'm free. So noon time and on, you can have me.
Okay.
Sure.
One, let's pick a time.
One o'clock?
One.
One o'clock, Friday afternoon, sidewalk.
Okay, so, um, we'll just, we can all meet in the Foley Drive cul-de-sac, 'cause there's plenty of room out there. And then we'll, I'll tell Lisa that we're coming to visit her.
Sure.
Yeah, dogs are allowed on the. So the one thing that's out there that's kinda neat was, uh, I guess back in the day, there was a merry-go-round?
Still there.
It's still there. It used to be out on the town property, and, uh, I understand you can get that thing going pretty fast. And zoom, right off of it.
Lots of code.
So we can give that a try, we'll put Mimi on it.
Were you all set, Mr. Jenks?
I am.
or gateway to, to the walkway, that's technically owned by the railroad.
Right.
Could that not sort of remain where it is currently positioned?
Yeah. It really could, so, the one thing that I-
I'd like to see that.
I did meet with, well, I did meet with these folks and I was trying to get it away from their backyard, so we may want to compromise a bit when we get into public hearing part of this, because I was trying to get it away from their house. So, we'll look at it. I know what you mean, though, Jesse, because it wouldn't impact anything, we could leave it right where it is. But, I think, I think if I had to, I don't know, it's got to be somewhere, so.
Have you had any contact with the Historical Commission regarding the barn?
No. I plan on following up Mr. Hubley, because I'm sure someone's going to want to embrace it, but like I said, it's going to want to fall down.
I thought I heard, just talking to another resident recently, that that was actually historical in nature, that-
There's definitely a historic structure, it's been there for some time. It will meet the requirements. I'm just saying to you, it's in such difficult position right now, I'm just not sure if it's that salvageable.
Right.
But the parts of it could certainly be salvaged.
You might want to get some sort of feedback, though, to, you don't encounter pushback when you go for a definitive or formalized application.
I understand.
That's it for me.
Mrs. Latrell?
So, you spoke to the soil tests and the comments from the Board of Health, but he also was concerned about attributable to the subvery.
Yep, so there's a drain easement that goes through here and goes down Foley, so there's setbacks to tribes, and then there's setbacks to drains, and I'll meet with Paul and we'll go over those. I mean, I don't see it being a limitation through this portion of the site, it certainly is a limitation on the upper portion of the site here. So, I'll just, I'll have to meet with him about it when we cite our septic systems. But when we looked at where we had done testing, we felt as though we met the requirements. We certainly can get 100 feet everywhere. It's the 200 feet that he was bringing up, and that ladder, that becomes a little bit more difficult to do.
And you don't think that that is applicable here?
I don't think it's applicable here, and I think it's something that the Board has historically waived, if it is applicable. So, if I get to that bridge and I have to cross it, I'll find a way. If we have to, we'll just cite the systems, you know, off to the side and I'll have to do a cluster, so. But they were indicating was if you looked at the geometry that we have here, he just thought maybe we would be somewhat limited. I mean, it's going to be pretty hard to do a soil test when I've got a barn sitting there today. I can't really get underneath it.
You're creative.
Yeah, no, I know. I can do it right on the side, I mean, we just, we couldn't do it underneath, so. You start looking at what's available for land, I've got an easement here, I've got the barn there, so this lot becomes pretty difficult in where you can go. But, there were spots that we could, you know, we could do it.
So, the driveway for Lot Three, I mean, for Lot Two was on Lot Three?
It was an easement, yeah, only, well, we could have drawn it coming around, but our soil absorption system was over here and how we were going to do this, so that's what, on your second sheet, that's how we showed you we were going to do it. So, I just didn't want to put the driveway over the soil absorption system as part of my plan, so we just did it as an easement. And again, I'm trying to minimize pavement.
Okay.
But, when we, if we go to a flexible plan, I'm going to do exactly the same thing I described to you before, I'm going to bring the right-of-way in just far enough, get my 80 feet of frontage, create my lots, and then try to create my open space around that.
So, how does that work? So, Lot Three pays taxes on that, that land, which is-
Where the easement would be, yes.
Which is Lot Two's driveway?
Mm-hmm.
That seems awkward.
Yeah, it won't be the first time.
And, so the rear, you'd need a waiver on the rear setback for?
No, so on Two, that might have been a comment, but we see the rear yard setback is here, basically, I've got this side that comes all the way up and then this is my rear, because here's my frontage.
So, what's showing, what's it showing at the 20, 20.19?
Yep, that's the side yard setback.
It's the side?
And you raised this at the last meeting and I talked to Walter about it, and he put, he put the rear-
Because he shows it as rear, although he doesn't put it on here. It's the only one that's not on.
Right, but, because I can see it here, here's my front.
He shows side at 16.6.
For Lot Two? It is, 16.6 to this side. So, we put down the minimum side? You see that, 16.6 here?
So, he's not showing rear at all on the plan?
No, not on this one. But, I know where he assigned it, because I can see the width, see the hatch line that goes around? That's showing, so front yard, side yard, side yard, rear yard, side yard, that's how he did it.
So, the rear isn't opposite the front?
Well, so, what he's basically saying is that you come along here and you're running along a side yard, a side yard, a side yard, and then this is the rear yard. If the building inspector took issue with it, I would resolve it with him, but I'm, I would, I could make this my rear yard and I would feel more comfortable with that, personally me, and I would have had a side yard going up and I would have had a side yard going up to a rear yard. That's how I see it. But that's not what Walter drew, I'm just telling you right now, what he drew was this is his rear yard.
Okay.
It's not the prettiest of subdivisions, there's a lot, there's a lot of-
It just-
-time and geometry to try to make this work.
Yeah, it seems like it's not what was envisioned with our rules and regs, because there's-
No, sometimes your rules and regu-
A lot of gymnastics required.
Sometimes your rules and regulations make you draw things that you don't necessarily like. I would say that to you, that I have that more often than not. It's difficult to meet requirements sometimes, there's no flexibility.
In the Flex Plan, there is.
No, and that's why we're going to go there. That's why I think we need to go there.
I just think that works better for these situations than trying to do a conventional subdivision.
Again, when we met, when I met with the family, the idea was just do it conventional, because that's what we, that's what the rest of the folks who live here have, so we just thought that that made more sense. In retrospect, and I know when I met with you that first time, it, we had a lot more flexibility in the Flex Plan, and that's why it has that name. So.
That's all I have.
Okay. Did anyone ask about the stream?
Me, did, somewhat, yeah.
The stream, did I miss that? There's a, an intermittent stream that does come down here, it goes into the pond that's at the back end of the site here, and then that goes to a culvert through the site, and the culvert goes right down Foley Drive out to the reservoir. So, do you have to go to Conservation? I will likely go to them for lot development, not necessarily for the right-of-way, because I don't see that necessarily tripping anything, but we'll definitely go to Concom. Again, I would have to, if, again, if we go down the Flex Plan, we're going to have yours, you're going to have a special permit for the flexible development, you're going to have LID, and we'll have SMP with planning, excuse me, with Conservation, stormwater management permit, it's required, when you have a special permit.
Can I just ask a question? As the engineer, can you clarify what the setback would be from that underground drainage pipe to the septic system features?
Yeah, I'm trying to think, it's like 25 feet in a Title V.
Because according to Fosse and O'Neal's review, that was much more extensive.
No, I, I understand, but I don't see what that, the provision that they're referencing, I don't think is applicable.
I think, as they mentioned, it's attributable to a reservoir.
But, I don't think this discharges directly to the reservoir itself, and that's what-
It's tributary to surface water.
It's tributary, right. But the open body of water, it doesn't go right into the reservoir, so I don't, I don't, again, I'll have to review that setback with them.
So, we're talking about flexible, we're talking about major residential development, what, what do you want us to do with this?
Okay, well, we filed a preliminary subdivision plan, and out of it, it may morph into a flexible development plan, because it's seeming like the issues that we have discussed really pertain, in the case of this one, to the geometry that's involved. I mean, I do have to waive the cul-de-sac, excuse me, the right-of-way down to 35 feet, which is well below your required, and the lots are difficult. So, I mean, that's kind of what's come out, from my perspective, that's what's come out of the discussion, and I'll put forward a flexible plan for you to consider as an option to this, and, you know, then we have to go through a special permit process if we go down that path, or I would continue to go with the conventional plan if that's what you deem to be more appropriate.
The, you mentioned the circle for your frontage-
Yes.
And passing to the rear lot line. Is, and you took us through each lot as to how that is accomplished without hitting the side lot line. If, if that was waived, not completely waived, but if, if you asked for some type of a waiver relative to the circle, would that clean up the shapes of the lots?
It would, but you can't grant it to me.
Right.
Yeah, so that's why I think if I go to a Flex Plan, you now have the ability to do that through the special permit process, and it just, it takes, see, my, I feel like my hands are tied a bit, and I feel like you folks are sitting there and your hands are tied a little bit, too. And if we, if we go down the Flex Road, I think I have a little bit more flexibility, but the problem I'm going to have is just trying to get that open space up to what the minimum is without, because again, I may start getting into some crazy lot lines as a result of that. So, that's the only shortcoming I think I'll have, but come Thursday, you'll see what I can put together, and we can always go back in this direction. Otherwise, Don, I have to go get a variance from the ZBA to get that lot shape requirement waived, and I, I'd be creating my own hardship, I think I'd have a hard time getting that balloon to stay floating.
So, what do you want to do?
I'd like to continue this to Monday, if you wouldn't mind, give me that shot, then you're going to go out to the site. The Board was going to meet again collectively on the seventh, so let's just see where this one goes. And, because I've not really tried this as a Flex, I gave you kind of that first time we met, the idea, but we never really put enough effort into it to see what it would look like. Because the family had said to me, just do, you know, we'd like to do a conventional subdivision, this is the only way to do it. But, you know, like I said, you know, when you've got an existing house here, and they didn't want to lose the house, and I think I would have trouble if I wanted to lose the house, because it would also meet the historical definitions, so I'm back, I'm back into that square again, too.
So, you'd want to come back on Tuesday, August 7th?
If that's, yeah, we did the seventh, I didn't even know what night that was, so it's Tuesday, that's fine, okay.
And did we, we determine that all five of us can be here on that Tuesday?
We determined that four of us could be there.
You were out of the room.
But I think the seventh or Tuesday, four.
Yeah. I think so.
Just Mr. Chairman, and it might make more sense if we're going to continue this one to the, to the seventh, that we do this one first. I know I said before, we're going to continue Pearl Street to seven o'clock, but if we did this one first and then you, assuming you're going to recuse yourself from Pearl Street again, you'd be free to go.
Oh, I, yeah, I'd have no problem with that order. So, make it at 6:59, if that's what you want to do, so it goes ahead, I'm fine with that scenario, yeah.
6:30 work for anybody? 6:59? What's the choice? 6:30?
Yeah.
Sure. Mimi?
Yeah?
All right, so, Mr. Mills?
Oh, make a motion, we continue the discussion of the preliminary review. I don't think we need to do-
Yeah, we don't, I guess we don't need a motion, so, shouldn't have called on you.
Scratch that.
So, we'll see you on the seventh at 6:30. Thank you very much, greatly appreciate it, and I'll see you on site at one o'clock on Friday. You're not going to be there. Oh, that's right, Karina, you're done. 12:30.
I see Mary.
All right, thank you.
So, 6:30 would be part, and seven is part.
Next item on the agenda is the planner's report.
Okay, first of all, three things. My review was due the 23rd of July, and we're working on it. There is a new policy from personnel on how that gets administered, and I have a copy of that. What I'll do is I'll forward it to you in an email tomorrow, so you can look at it. Chestnut Meadow subdivision is starting the water main work.
Sorry, say that again, starting what?
Chestnut Meadow subdivision is starting the water-
Oh, thank you.
-line work. I believe they said August 2nd, tentatively, just so you know. This is, there's another item about a rollover from a prior zoning bylaw, there was some money left over, but I think in the past, I worked with the Chair to resolve what to do with that for accounting. There's a choice to roll it or refund portion of parts, or use it for something related to this. And in the past, it's been rolled over to the next fiscal year. So, I just need to get, pull the old file to see what we did, I believe it was rolled over last year, and ask if, work with Don to see if that's the same approach. So, I was going to talk to Don about that tomorrow.
What's the money again?
It's a, back in 2000, as a companion to the 2007 Town Plan, the project was funded for a consultant for town zoning bylaw and subdivision rules and regulations, the work that was going on, and I think it was like a 76 or $70,000 contract, that some of the money was paid out and used during that process, but there was some residual in that account. So, what happens is it stays there and it stays for the Planning Board's use for the same purpose related to that, or it can go back to the general fund.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any questions, comments, planner's report? Anyone from the public? Oh. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes.
Those are still pending.
Next item on the agenda is our next meeting is August 7th at 6:30.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion's been made to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Uh, aye. We're adjourned.